Many of those, like I said, you know, the evacuations are evacuations. Many of these situations were actual rescues, people in deep water that needed to be saved. And these guys and dispatcher Rappold kept things together in there, kept us well informed, and did an amazing job that day.
Well, thank you. And it's a new facility, so I'm sure you know you had a lot to adapt to, new procedures and working together. We can't thank you enough for performing exceptionally during a critical time. So, thank you and congratulations.
Yeah. Thank you all very much.
Just one thing I just want to say, you know, this is what they did on this.
It's just situations like this where, you know, we live in a great community and there's great people in it that take others' situation into consideration. And, you know, you risked your own life to help him. Like you said, it was, probably didn't have much to think about because that's just your frame of mind, was just to get him out of the water. So, I thank, thankful that you did it, and I'm glad Steve's healthy and doing well. And the police, I was at the EOC with these guys, and, you know, just the work that they do is just unbelievable. You know, we just try and stay out of the way. And, you know, I'm just glad it worked out the way it did. And, you know, I thank you all for what you did.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just do the same, same thing, and put your own life at risk, you know, especially if it was a finger beer, those of narrow. And I don't know if that's where you were, but you could have gone in just as easy, and then Mike would be having to pull both you guys out. No, thank you for not panicking, running the other way. I don't know what I would have done, you know?
So, we have a couple of proclamations for you. We have one first that I'll read on behalf of the board, with my glasses on. So, whereas the Board of Selectmen commend Stephen Hill in recognition of his heroic act on Thursday, January 4th, 2018, by saving the life of Steven Moan, the Situate harbor master during winter storm Grayson within astronomical high time and severe coastal flooding. Whereas we honor and recognize Stephen Hill, a person who faced extraordinary circumstances and acted with courage, honor, and self-sacrifice in an act of heroism and exceptional merit in public service despite risks to his personal well-being. His prompt actions saved a life, and the town of Situate thanks him for his extraordinary efforts during a time of crisis. Therefore, be it resolved that the entire town of Situate and the Board of Selectmen recognize Stephen Hill as a truly good citizen. To TD Securities USA LLC at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $227,819.75. Further voted that in connection with the marketability, marketing and sale of the note, preparation and distribution of the notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated January 3rd, 2018, as revised by bond counsel to the town on January 10th, 2018, and a final official statement dated January 18th, 2018, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2 through 12, in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the note for the benefit of the holders of the note from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-insurance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient or such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the agenda for the meeting, a copy of which is attached hereto and posted on the bulletin board of the town at least 24 hours before the meeting in compliance with Section 11, 711 of the town charter. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public and no vote was taken by secret ballot. That a notice stating the place, time, date, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy therefore posted in a manner conspicuously visible to all public, to all the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with the alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General is set forth in 940 CMR 29.032B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the note were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general law, Chapter 30A, paragraphs 18 to 25 as amended, dated January 23rd, 2018, Clerk of Board.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Pam, and thank you, Nancy, for all your hard work on that. We appreciate it. I wouldn't mind getting a copy, if you have it, of the standard and pores report, just to have, yeah, just send it at some point. That would be great.
Electronic copy or?
Yeah, no, electronic, don't print it. We're environmentally friendly these days.
We could post a copy on the website, too.
Yeah, that would be, that would be, I think people would like to see that. That's a great idea. All right. All right. Next on the agenda, CPC articles. Karen Conley, Chairman of the CPC. How are you tonight?
I'm good, thank you. You know, I think you were just coming.
Well, men's night here with rescues and weddings.
Yep, yep. Important things, good things.
Yes. I'm here tonight to simply run down the list of applications that we received this year. I didn't ask any applicants to come because I didn't want to, you know, get into that. But we are voting all the applications pretty much on February 12th. So, first of all, I'll point out that all the applications are available on the CPC website. So, if you wanted to look at them, certainly they're right there. I'll point out that the application for the track and field is not valid. It's completely changed, so.
They're redoing it?
Yes.
Okay.
And they redid it, and I'll tell you about that, our meeting last night. So, here's where we are. The Beach Commission gave us four applications. One was for Flag System, which Maura Glancy tells me that the Beach Revolving Fund should handle that. It's not eligible for CPC funds because their removable struck, their removable, their equipment, essentially, so.
Are those the markers that mark the areas that are being?
Yeah, like what kind of a day it is, I guess, and the, you know, what the dangers might be. It's not that we didn't think it was a good idea, we just didn't think that we were the right funding source for it. We did have a request for planters at Hammerock Beach for $3,000. They're these huge cement things, and the, so. The shade structures for Egypt and Peggety Beach, we didn't get an estimate for yet. And restrooms for Egypt Beach and Hammerock Beach for $260,000. Leaving the Flag System aside, we told the Beach Commission representatives that they really needed to come to the Board of Selectmen to find out from the Board what direction you want to take in terms of our beaches. And we also suggested that a simple plan, not something elaborate, but simple, outlining each of the beaches and what might be done at each beach, over what time period, what the money would be, and what the sources of funds would be. Some of them might come from capital, some from the Beach Revolving Fund, some from CPC. But we thought it best to have a sort of comprehensive outline so that, you know, people at Peggety don't think that, well, we're not getting what they're getting at North Situate, and so we just thought that was a better way to go about it. Plus, we had real serious questions about the restrooms, whether or not that was even a good thing to do. And because of the fact that the parking lot, especially at Egypt Beach, probably has to be redone, there were just too many questions, and we didn't think it was our place to make those decisions. So, kind of punting it back.
Set it back here. No, I appreciate that. I think that's actually a good direction. Is John still a liaison to the Beach Commission, or are you?
I think he is. I'm now, I'm not, I think I got.
John is? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Lorraine's saying yes, so, okay.
Well, and it got to the point where each Beach Commissioner, on the Beach Commission, came with their own separate application.
Yeah, no, we need to weigh that in a little bit.
So, it was kind of a little disorganized, shall we say.
Yeah, I agree.
And they do have the Beach Revolving Fund as a possible place.
So, we'll reach out to them.
Yes.
Yeah, they should have a comprehensive plan, come back to us, and we can.
Right. And I think they were a little worried when I said a plan, but I mean something really simple, an outline, so.
Right. No, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. The Historical Commission is asking for $10,000 for a planning grant, a survey. And essentially what that is, is currently there are 1,018 buildings in Situate that are part of the Mass Cultural Resources Information System. We have approximately 100 to 150 more buildings to be identified and recorded. And this is an historical project through the Historical Commission. And they've come to us before, maybe five, six years ago, and maybe even earlier, to do a couple of these surveys. So, I think that's why there's already 1,000 buildings in it. They haven't done it in a few years, so this will probably clean it up. They will be getting, if we grant them $10,000, they will get a $10,000 match from the Massachusetts Historical Commission. So, we think it's part of our mission to make sure we know, you know, what assets we have in town and to have them in a database that the state has created. So, we think that's a worthwhile thing to do.
You said, though, that you haven't voted officially on any of these yet.
No, no. So, any questions you have, I can either take them down, or you can come to the meeting when we're going to be voting because we'll be discussing them, or if you just want to email me with questions, I can certainly bring them up.
Okay.
So, we've given people a general sense of, you know, whether or not this is going to work or not, but we haven't officially voted. So, and that's why I'm here tonight. We continue on the plaques.
Karen, I'm sorry. What does that designation, what does it mean if they get, if a, what did you call it?
It's called the Massachusetts Cultural Resources Information System. It's a database of all the historical properties in the state.
Okay.
But obviously, it takes people and it takes local commissions to participate. And in order to incentivize communities to do it, they provide matching grants. So, the fact is, is that over the years, Situate has managed to enter 1,000 properties into that database. The Commission believes there are about 100 to 150 more buildings in Situate that simply have not been surveyed yet. They did it by area of town, and I don't have the map as to which areas have actually been completed and which haven't. But you can assume that anything around the common, anything, you know, in some of the more obvious places has, have already been done. But this is the Historical Commission coming to us versus the Historical Society. So, this is the town entity asking us for this money. We continue on plaque restoration efforts. We did ask the question, how many plaques actually do we have in town? I don't know the answer to that, but we can certainly find out. But these are two plaques that are World War I plaques on the loss in common. And again, you know, it's a good thing to keep these things up and to preserve them. This budget item is very much in line with all the other plaque restoration that we've done, and that's been through the Historical Society.
Do you know if that's cleaning, or is it cement that needs to be?
No, it's usually the plaque itself that needs to be cleaned, and depending on what the material is. I know that in the case of the Chief Justice Cushing, the Dallin plaque, they actually made a model of it, and they put that back on the rock, and the other real one somewhere around here. I think it's somewhere in Town Hall.
Yeah.
So, it depends on what the, what it's made of as to whether or not it's stealable or not. So, here is the famous map, Tony.
Yep.
We still have the same outstanding question. Our basic bottom-line question is, what is the map worth? If it's worth $50,000, spend $9,000. If it's worth $9,000, maybe not. If it's worth nothing, don't do it. So, we've been back and forth with Elizabeth Foster, and she understands what our concerns are. So, the last time we met with her, she said she was going to do some more research, talk to Arthur Beal, who's a Situate resident who has a lot of expertise in historical artifacts and things like that. So, unless we find out what it's worth.
Well, yeah, I mean, I was at the meeting where we discussed this.
Yeah.
I don't know that it has a lot of direct significance to the town of Situate, but it's made by a very famous mat maker, map makers, what my understanding is.
Well, and apparently Situate does have some connection with.
A little bit, but it wasn't like.
It's not clear. I mean, it seems to me as though someone found it in their attic, brought it down to the Town Hall and said, "Look at this old map." And someone else found it many years later, rolled up.
Somebody that it has more significance to.
Well, that's the other thing. I mean, I, yeah, I think it might be worthwhile to take it into the Mass Archives at Columbia Point, just to see what they might think of it. But, you know, that's up to the applicant to do the work to satisfy us that this is money well spent.
Sure.
So, I don't know where that's going. If we don't get more information by the time we vote, and it's, this isn't going to, nothing's going to happen to it if we don't do it, so that's that. The Civil War Books Restoration is the final phase of that. We've been funding that for the past, probably 10 years, and it's the final phase, so. And those are lists of people who participated in the Civil War, et cetera, et cetera. And that will be done, so might as well finish it. The North Situate Merchants Association asked us to fund flower boxes. After talking to the applicant, we realized these are not fundable through CPC. They would be removable, and so we just can't do it. Plus, we had some real serious questions about the budget, that they were proposing to keep these things in bloom and to keep them planted. And it was more, I think, than the historical, than the Beautification Commission's entire budget. So, as nice as the idea was, we just couldn't see that it was something that we could do.
Okay.
And we did tell the applicant that. Let me skip down, if you wouldn't mind, to the open space. We've been approached by the owner of Zero Elm Street. She has 8.9 acres and would like to sell it to CPC, however. She's given us no estimate as to what she thinks she would want for it. We have serious questions as to whether it even has frontage. We did suggest to her that she should go to the Water Resources Commission, as well as the Conservation Commission, to ask them, do they have any interest in it? Because if neither of those do, and if it's wet and it doesn't have the right frontage, I'm not sure why we would buy it. She seems to think there might be two buildable lots, but if that's the case, it's east of 3A, she could get a lot more than we would probably be willing to pay for it as open space.
Where is it?
I think Zero Elm is down near Fennings, maybe, or O'Brien.
Yeah, that's what I would think. That's what I would think. And I didn't think there was any, there's certainly nothing there with any frontage, that's for sure.
What side is, it must be on the side close to the harbor, right?
In a buck's gate circle.
And there are.
Well, I thought the odd numbers on Elm are on the left going up towards Country Way. The evens are on the right, unless they jump back and forth.
No, they called it Zero.
Yeah, right.
Called it Zero because they had no number four.
Right. So, it must be on the left side.
And there are other issues that I don't want to get into that are.
Okay. So, that's not happening.
Neighbor-type issues that I'm not sure we want to get into. First cliff. Apparently, this piece of property, which is 4.79 acres, has been on and off the market for a number of years, and the town has looked at it off and on for possibly purchasing it. Right now, the list price is $950,000.
How many acres count? I'm sorry, 4.79?
It's 4.79. We think it's worth looking at. So, CPC last night voted to get an appraisal. An appraisal will help tell us, you know, what it might really be worth, and because, and again, I don't want to editorialize as to what it is. It's only worth what someone's willing to pay for it. But the problem with it is, is that there are conservation issues related to that piece of property. There are also, the fact is, is that you can really only put one house on it, on a very small part of the piece of property, and they would have to replicate wetlands. It's, so.
Is it, can you tell us where it is? Is this the end of Sunset Road?
Oh, I was just going to ask.
I can show you.
Is it the one right across from the Melwar?
It's the, this is looking at it, the boathouse is here, so it's this big piece of property.
Can you?
Sure.
And Karen, well, Tony's getting that. I thought we could pay $17,000 an acre, period.
No. No, we can pay, we can pay up to an appraised value.
Right. But if it's wetlands, that's what the wetland.
I always thought. I always thought it was 17, you know, maybe that's all it.
That's what we've been willing to pay over in the West End. When you look at the other side of Situate, land is very scarce and very valuable.
Oh, I couldn't agree more.
So.
Karen, let's face it, if that was buildable, there'd be houses on it.
I know, I know. Well, that's why we're simply getting an appraisal, we're not rushing into anything.
And I've sat on this board and listened to people's different ideas.
Right. It's a beautiful piece of property.
Oh, wow.
And if the town could have it for a reasonable price.
Sure.
You know, we also talked about maybe the neighbors who might not want to see anything built there might be willing to help with the cost of it. But we're at the very beginning. It came on the market about two, three months ago, as far as I know, and the people at NOAA actually approached us. So, we thought, it's not up to us to decide, it's up to all of us, especially the Board. Maura and Karen did attend a meeting where we talked about it. So, we're simply at the very beginning of this. I have no idea whether we can actually make it to Town Meeting.
So, who would be the applicant for that? How does that work?
Well, the applicant could be the Conservation Commission.
Oh.
Yeah, because it was, it would be to place it into open space and protect that whole area. And I think we're also determining the owner of the land that is right on the water.
Well, my understanding, there are two parcels that are, have, there are no owners identified, and therefore taxes haven't been paid.
Right.
So.
Right. So, I think we just need to do a little bit more research and see what the total value is of that area.
But NOAA would like to be able to, you know, put trails on there, and they would, you know, participate in this. They won't participate in buying it, obviously, but, so, I think it's something that we'll just continue to look at. And again, if CPC can buy it, there's no doubt that we can.
Okay.
Whether or not we should, no, that's okay. That's why, you know, I'm here tonight to tell you that this is on the table. And I would encourage anyone who wants to come to our meetings when we, it's on the agenda.
And who's bringing this, who brought this one forward to the owners?
No, the people at NOAA.
Oh, okay.
Let us know. They called Brad.
That it was for sale.
Yeah. And Brad sort of, you know, took up the idea, and Nancy Durfee's been working with us on it. So, you know, it's, again.
Again, who's going to be the person that's, that supports it? It's not the, it's not your committee.
It'd be you, wouldn't it? On Town Meeting floor, it'd be CPC.
Well, I think that's why Karen's bringing it forward, is whether or not we want to support.
Right.
This purchase. That's why she's here to sort of give us a heads up on things that are coming before town.
And you can't make that decision until we have some idea of what they're, what the realistic price is.
Right. You said they're looking at just under a million?
That's what it's listed for. Whether or not it appraises out at that, I have no idea. And it's not for me to do that. So, we agreed to have Brad hire an appraiser to come out and give us an appraisal. And that will tell us, I think, something as to whether or not we're even considering it.
Right.
Well, I think, my only two cents is if you're not even considering it, don't spend the 15 grand on an appraisal.
An appraisal is not going to cost us $15,000.
Well, whatever it is, how much is it? How much is the appraisal?
Not to exceed $8,500, and it's not going to be that. It's not going to be that.
Don't spend $5,000.
Well, Tony, you know, I don't want to get into an argument about it, but we've had situations where we should have had appraisals done prior to going to Town Meeting, and we didn't. And that's all I'll say.
Well, I think you're missing what I'm saying.
No, I'm not missing what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. But I don't think it's just a.
I'm going to finish what I'm going to say anyways, and you can snap back at me all you want.
All right.
If the group doesn't think that it's a viable piece of property, because it looks like it's probably underwater half the day, then I don't think we should waste $8,000 to do an appraisal on it. This group and your group. So, that's, that's my only, my only point on it.
I hear you.
So, I.
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, complicating this, and we have conservation members in the audience. So, this property, the current owners have been involved with conservation for a long time, as I understand it. And those, and as I understand it, this property has been marketed as-is with those unresolved issues. So, I don't know how that complicates the appraisal portion of it, and whether we can be effectively arms-length because it's involved with our Conservation Commission. Having said that, I think that this site as a town asset would be tremendous.
For the right price.
For the right price, yes. Price aside, to preserve it for open space for the town and perhaps use it for recreation, I think would be a home run. Obviously, we don't want to pay more than the market will bear, and if it hasn't, if a waterfront, to Sean's point, if waterfront property, Situate Harbor has not sold, there's a reason for it. And, you know, a million dollars is what they're asking, but I think we have to tread carefully.
But what's the seller in all this? Are they even interested in selling to us?
Yes. They, they're interested.
Penny, name an address.
I'm sorry. Penny Scott Pike, Infield Row, Conservation Commission. They are interested in entertaining an offer from the town. After, in, we have spoken to them about the appraisal, whether we would appraise it first before we even consider making an offer. And so, they're on board there. And we have spoken to the council about.
How we can, okay.
All that. So, we are above board.
Great.
Okay, so, there's no, no word here. And it's just, it got started somewhere, so get the appraisal and then see if it is a feasible project. It might not be.
So, Jim, can we circle around with Brad and kind of bring all the players together and figure out a game plan to assess whether or not we really want to, A, assess it to see what the value is that we would offer this, this family? So, the Board can, you know.
The appraisal will tell you if it's a buildable lot or not, because that's what they're going to do. They're going to say you can put one house, they have two houses there. So, you almost have to go through the appraisal process to find out whether it's marketable. So, I think we need to go through that. I mean, I'll circle back with Brad, but I think you need to go through the appraisal to find out what the market says it will go for. That's all you can pay under the statute. You can't pay more than appraisal.
Right, right.
Yeah. So, I think doing the appraisal will give us the information we need to say, let's look at it further, or let's just forget about it.
Okay. Sean?
What's the tax value? Does anyone know? What's the value of that?
You mean the assessed, the assessed value?
Yes.
I don't know. We can find out. The assessed values are usually.
Oh, I know, but, yeah, no, I know, but.
That's when the last valuation was done, there.
I mean, I agree with Karen. I think it's worth taking a look at because it opens up a really nice area. You could connect the trail here to the Maritime Center, and it could become a nice area.
Yes, Sean, did you have a question?
Well, the paintings here, could we put trails on that? You're not walking on marsh grass and eau grass and stuff like that?
It'd be boardwalks.
All right, okay, all right.
Yes, we could, with boardwalks.
And not even open space, it might be worth, you know, whatever, you know, even if we couldn't walk on it.
No, this, the property has other options too. That the huge deal that had been many years was planted was farmed. And, you know, it could be farmed again. You know, things like that you can do on a conservation.
More if you can.
So.
So there's a few uses there, other than just a boardwalk over from the Marine Center over at NOAA.
So are you suggesting that we would buy it to plant, to farm?
I'm not suggesting.
No, no, I'm just.
I'm just saying, there are, I mean, uses other than a park. Okay, let's look at it, ask the public first, that you could possibly have a community garden there or something. I don't know. I mean, is, I think it's something that gives some opportunities for the town, but we need to find out the appraisal before we even, you know, go anywhere with it. And if it appraises, we pray into what they want, then they might tell us.
You don't need our authority to appraise. That's below your administrative budget, right?
Correct.
But we just want to let you know what we're doing.
Right. We just want to have a real solid piece of information that we can use for negotiating purposes, if it's worth it.
Right.
And if it comes in really low, we might as well, we might go for it. You might say, let's do it. If, on the other hand, it comes in, you know, much higher, the worst thing that can happen out there, I guess, is there's going to be a small house out there and nothing else. So I don't think it's a disaster. It's not going to turn into a condo development out there, but.
No.
So we're just proceeding one step at a time.
Yeah, and again, I think we have to look at what the use of it is. So what is, what do you guys perceive the use of this property as, a walking trail out to the marsh area here?
Number one, yes. Right to Noah's bit of building, okay, from the Marina. That would be number one. And then see if there is an interest, because that's a wide open space, and it was farmed many years.
So we, you're looking to buy it for a walking path and a community farm?
Possibly.
Well, there's also the value of having a piece of land that is undisturbed, that is beautiful. It's not just for people to walk around on. There's wildlife. I mean, I'm, you know, all I'm saying is, I think it's worth us looking at, and if it's, we can't get it for the right price, and we just, we just don't go forward with it.
Yes, Ann?
Ann, Redline, Penny Crest Road. When we sit at the middle walk and we look across the harbor and we see this unobstructed beautiful piece of land that really should be brought into the entire water, it's worth it. And as far as I'm concerned, we need to purchase open space regardless of its use, whether it's walking trails, or a little farming, or whatever. We always put a few sheep on it if you want. And so we can go from there. But it would be nice to buy property for open space.
Says the knitting lady, sorry.
Sorry?
Says the lady who knits.
Says the lady who knits, but also pays attention. Land east of 3A. We have bought so much open space in the West End. It would be so nice to have these here on the harbor that we can enjoy looking at, which we should. And it should be ours.
Okay. Well, thank you. I think, I think everyone has expressed their concerns, and you don't need our approval to spend appraisal money, so, but we appreciate it. And I think we just need to sort of corral this in a little bit and all be on the same page if we're going to spend money on a piece of open space.
It's potentially a big amount of money.
Yeah.
On the other hand, if it comes in at $400,000, you know, we spent that on 26 acres out in the West End, which is, you know, kind of comparing apples and oranges, so.
All right. Did you want to go back to recreation, or is there one?
Yes.
Okay. Or is there another one?
That's done. I think I'm done with everything. So to go back to the Recreation Department, they came in, in December, and presented us with some numbers that we found rather shocking. Tony was there. We had a spirited discussion. They came back last night with a fuller plan, but it was simply for the high school track and field, the football field, the, in Phase One. And then Phase Two would be the baseball field, I believe JV, I'm assuming, and the girls softball field. Long and short of it is, the number it came in at was about $6 million. That is way too much for us to bite off.
Take on.
Yeah. We do, however, think that there's clearly a role for CPC in these projects going forward. But we suggested that they need to come back to you, to the Town Administrator, to the School Superintendent, and, you know, work out, and to Nancy especially, what are the possible sources of funding? It could be CPC, it could be bonding, it could be the capital budget, there's, you know. So we think that we have a role as part of the picture, but we think the big picture has to be decided by not us, but you. So we, I'm rather doubting we're going to vote. We can't vote. We don't even have that kind of money.
No, again, I appreciate that. I mean, I think if a big recreation project is going forward, we certainly should be engaged in that as well.
Yeah, I got an email from Maura this morning. I said, set up the meeting as soon as you can.
Well, I haven't, I haven't seen the proposal, so I don't think we are.
Oh, no, there's no proposal yet, but we're talking.
No, I know. Sorry, Jim.
No, Maura emailed me this morning about the meeting last night, and I said, set it up as soon as you can, and we'll start talking about the numbers. But you can borrow on the CPC.
Right.
Issue notes on that. You cannot use, unless they've changed the law, you cannot use the CPC money to actually purchase the turf for a turf field. You can do everything else.
That we knew.
You can't buy the turf.
But there are also, when I looked at the budget, the more expanded budget, I realized there are certain things there that we would just have to pick, to say no to right off the bat. But again, I don't think that's up to us to go through a budget like that. I think it's up to, you know, you guys to decide, how do you want to do this, and what are the possible sources of funding, and where do we fit in? Because we're all in support of it. I mean, we all know these things have to be done, but we, CPC simply doesn't have the capacity, unless we did do bonding. We take in about eight, 1.8 million a year out of the 3% surcharge. And I will tell you, the matching funds from the state are going to be historically low this year, if they're 10%, 12%.
I saw how low that was.
Well, Boston opted in.
Boston opted in.
Oh, is that why?
So Boston was just.
Well, you know, to be fair to Boston, Boston has been contributing to this state matching fund since 2003 through their Property Registry of Deeds, but they haven't taken any money out. So they've been really subsidizing us, and I'm surprised it took them this long to figure out.
The first towns that get them are getting 100% match.
That's right. That's us.
The towns that get in later and later, we're getting less and less, so.
Right.
Unless they do something about the revenue source, that's going to keep going down.
We had a good ride for a couple of years there.
Yeah, we did. You know, and 10% still isn't anything to sneeze at. It's not what it used to be. But I did send you, I hope I didn't overwhelm everyone, the, a list of all the projects that were done.
No, that's nice to have. Thank you.
And I just would like to point out, I mean, we've been doing this since 2003, so a lot of things have been accomplished. And if you look at the last page, the bottom line, we've spent 34% of our funds on open space, 16% on historical, 21% on affordable housing, which if we had done this chart two years ago, would have been zero.
Zero, yeah.
Or close to it. And 27% on recreation. And we can, we can figure out recreation only because we can only take that from undesignated funds. So even though there's not a recreation category, we know by where it came from as to, you know, what the category was. So all I can say is, you know, a lot of projects, a lot of work, a lot of things that probably wouldn't have been done, have been done.
Absolutely.
And.
Is that $19 million or 21? Which one?
19.
19? Okay.
So what's the balance?
It's up on the top.
Which balance are you looking for?
Well, how much money do we have?
That's another sheet.
Twenty, oh, right there.
That would be.
I looked at this, I couldn't figure it out. Is it the 5 million?
No, Tony, yeah, I don't know what sheet you're looking at.
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
Yeah, he's got that one.
Yeah.
So it's the 5, 7, 1, 1 is our net balance?
Yes. Now, see, what happens is, because we haven't gone to town meeting yet to appropriate the funds, the 10% for historic, et cetera, et cetera, and the 5 for admin, that is just underestimated receipts. So it's, we do have a total of 5.7 million available. However, when we go to town meeting, the Community Housing Reserve will be, get another 179 put into it, because we took that down to zero at the town meeting in the fall to do those.
So of that 5.7 million, all the, everything that's been allocated is already out of that?
Yes.
Okay. The one thing I did note is in the, that 178 underneath that, 10% requirement?
Yes.
That's 10 for each one of those.
Yes, correct.
That times three.
It's 10% plus 5% for admin.
That's the same question I had last week.
Yes. So it's 35. Unfortunately, that sheet is a DOR sheet.
Yeah.
We have so many different reports. We have, it gets a little confusing, but, and I will say, with the admin budget, we turn back a lot of that money to the General Fund every year, so. At any rate, so I think we're in good shape, but clearly, if you look at the bottom line, at least in terms of the undesigned fund balance, we're like out of the ballpark in terms of the high school.
Right.
And that doesn't include the field study that's almost finished.
That's, that was going to be my next question.
That will tell us what the rest.
Well, the rest of you all looked at under one umbrella.
Just numbers to keep in your head. Nancy's fast fingers, a $7 million bond, the first year principal payment is $466,000. So, and then you add whatever your interest rate is, so it's still a big chunk.
But given the fact we've been doing this since 2003, you know, it may be time to make an investment.
But if you issue a bond on the CPC, you can't repeal it. You have to leave at least enough of the CPC surcharge to pay the bond until the bond goes away.
Right. Okay. So when's the field study supposed to be complete? Do you know the?
Maura had it in her hand last night, but she hadn't reviewed it, so she didn't want to let it out, and I don't blame her.
Oh, okay, great.
So.
She had a draft, but I don't think there were numbers.
Not defined.
Assigned to it yet either, as to what each particular project would cost.
So you'll bring that in front of us in a couple of weeks?
Soon as I get it.
Okay.
Great.
You know, so when if you guys can then, you know, just say, okay, CPC, can you help us with this? Can you help us with that? Then we're, you know, not trying to read everyone's minds here.
No, we appreciate the partnership. Thank you. Thanks for putting all this together and.
Oh, you're welcome. And please feel free to come to our meeting on February 12th if you have anything more to say. And as I said, if you want to email me any questions, please do. Thank you.
We know where to find you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary, Dan, Penny for coming. So we are about to start our annual review. We'll let Nancy and Jim set up. We're going to be spending the next hour or so going through the budgets. First, we'll take a budget overview from Nancy and Jim with regards to where we are financially and where we're going. And then we're going to go through the assessors, advisory, town administrator, and selectmen budgets, the reserve fund, general liability insurance, streetlights, workers' comp, unemployment, library, town clerk, and then widow's walk. So we have a lot to cover. Do you have everything? Do you have a question?
I would just say, let's do the library first, or whoever's here, do their budgets first.
After Jim. Yeah, we can take a lot more.
Yeah, my recommendation would be do whatever the departments that are doing their own budgets, then we'll come back and do ours, especially because ours are mostly the same, very little changes. So.
All right.
All right, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, so let's try to keep it that way. So I'll be very brief. The budget's balanced. Any questions?
Well done. Thank you. Good night.
Most of the credit, you know, the work was done by, the hard work was done by Alan and Nancy, so I appreciate that before I got it. So I've been delving into it, trying to get my hands around what's actually going on. But let's go through it real quick, and then we'll take any questions, and you can go through the department budget. So the FY '17 recap is closed. Certified free cash of 3.252 million, I think that's the highest the town's ever had. General fund receipts and new growth are up about $1,488. That's very good. Continued investments in capital include roads, school technology, full shore protection, water supply, sewer improvements. Two of our three major building projects opened for use, that's the library and the Public Safety Complex, and the AAA bond rating was maintained, AAA plus, I'm sorry, AA plus, sorry, getting ahead of myself. FY '18, year-to-date, new growth was up $72,000 on projections, that's an early number. Local receipts right now are on par with FY '17. The big number for that is motor vehicle excise. That comes in in February, so we still wait on that. So if you looked at a chart of our local receipts, you'd kind of, we'd take a little bit of back, but the big motor vehicle excise commitment is in February, so that's normal, and we get used to that. Middle school's open, the students seem to love it over there. We've completed the full shore protection on the three sections of Oceanside. I think we pulled the last section yesterday, so that's looking good. They still have some stone work to do, but most of the work down there is done. As an aside, people are stopping Kevin Cafferty in the streets down there, thanking him for those projects, and how well the seawalls did in that big storm in January. Final design on the contract for the $22 million water pipe replacement has been awarded, and I believe Weston and Sampson received that design contract. Kevin is working with the Army Corps for repairs to the jetty and the feasibility study of full shore protection options in the Cedar Point area. And the standard of pause reaffirmed our AA plus bond rating this January. Pam said Nancy and Pam did most of the work, they did a fantastic job. Standard of pause, I talked to them over the weekend at the MMA conference, they were very impressed by the presentation. The challenges that are ahead, the new buildings, the warranties are expiring, some of our older buildings, a lot of the equipment is going to be coming to useful life, so we have a lot of billing costs coming up. Fixed costs from employee benefits will continue to go up. I believe we budgeted 7% for health insurance, and that number's going to be a little under five, so we got a good number on health insurance today.
So good.
That's great.
Which is very good, with the new Meyer contract. We spent significant staff time and funds on ocean and storm-related issues, including the storms and cleanups. We're working to obtain the grant funds to continue our major initiatives, including the full shore improvements and the fax project in the budget. When we get to that, we are funding 75% of the fax position, because the grant expires in September, and the new grant will not be awarded until September. So knowing how important that is to the town, we have put that funding in the budget. If during the year we get the grant, that money will be available at a later time.
Is that federal grant?
Yep.
So do we need to lobby Senator Warren or Senator Markey to ensure that we can continue that?
I don't believe they even put in their application yet for the coming year.
Okay.
But the way the program works is they can put in a five-year request, which is what we're just coming to the end of, and then after that, it's in one-year increments.
Oh, okay. So we would only have a one-year, it would be an annual request to continue?
Does Ann Marie do that, or do we do that?
Ann Marie normally does.
There are more of these groups springing up, looking for funding, so it's getting, it's getting more competitive. We can talk to Stevie Lynch's office and the senators when the time comes, but.
I think we should, just because we've been a leader in this space, and it would be a shame if we lost it, just because we didn't have a good advocate in the right room.
And that's why we're going to continue to fund it, whether the grant comes in or not.
Okay.
And when Markey came to town, that was one of the main things we talked about. So we have been doing that all along, and we definitely have his support. So we should get in touch with him.
We have old buildings that we need to transition into use, Gate School being the big one. Recreation is getting some work done up there now. Council on Aging is going to go up there, but that still leaves a pretty large building without anybody in it, so we need to, that's what I'm going to do with that. The OPEB liability increased by $15 million. Most of that was due to the change in the mortality tables on the actuarial accounts. I believe that report's available. Someone wants to look at it. We could also throw it up on the website. It is really, really, really dull reading, but if someone wants to pull through it, we can make it available. FY '19 operating budget focal points, for the most part, it is a level service budget. FY '19 operating budget is balanced without using free cash, without using stabilization funds, just recurring revenues. Local receipts and new growth are projected to increase by a modest $25,000. State aid receipts and assessments are level funded. We do expect the new numbers to come in shortly, but a lot of people forget that for every dollar the state gives us, they take back a lot, too. So, we'll have to look at those numbers pretty carefully when they come in. Generally, the town leaves that level funded as long as the new assessments do not exceed the new revenue. If they do, we're going to have to make some adjustments, because that'd put us in a negative position. Four union town contracts have expired. The estimated cost of settling those contracts has been distributed into the departmental budgets. We will not discuss what that number is. We don't want to give away our negotiating policy, but it is in there. There are 1.2A positions added to address human service needs. One of those is a full-time in the Board of Health. The other is 10 hours in the Council on Aging. Employee benefits increased at $460,000, a little over. That does not include cost-of-living adjustments. And again, we maintain our commitment to the FACS program, economic development, road maintenance, and full shore protection.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to spend any time going over this. This is a graphic that we put together, showing you where the money's going, where it's up, where it's down. Unemployment is really the significant one that's down, and debt service. Most of the other ones are... Pensions are 4.42, which is actually not a bad number. Most of those that I've seen are going up 7% or 8%, so that's actually not that bad. I don't have any time on this.
Can I say any questions on that?
Nope.
Anyone?
Nope, no.
Karen.
This might be in the weeds, and I don't know if it's the right time to go into it, but I'm sure Nancy, you've done different projections on the OPEB outstanding obligation. And are policies at 2% funding right now?
2% of the pension assessment.
How long does that take, then? Just, what's the projection?
At 2% of the pension assessment? Never.
Never, yeah.
You'll never get it.
So...
In the OPEB actuarial report, I can give you a copy, they actually do a couple of scenarios, which you may find helpful to look at.
Yeah, that I'd like to do.
How it affects it.
Yeah, and that affects our rating as well.
That's done every two years.
Pardon me?
It's done every two years, by law. We have to do that.
Okay. And that impacts our overall rating, though, depending on our funding on that, right?
It was affecting our rating.
If you look at AAA communities, most of them are doing significantly more in their OPEB. We are now at the point where OPEB is a major factor in the ratings. It's probably the single largest factor that would prevent Situate from being a AAA community. If you look at our other metrics, they're really pretty good, but the fact that we are so far behind in our OPEB, they now use that as a real big factor on this. So, that's one of the big factors for not getting a AAA.
And that policy gets reviewed under, how does that get reviewed? Just, as the freshman selectmen? How does the determination of the 2%? How does that process go, as far as making any difference? If we wanted to, say, do a one-time payment, or increase that?
Right now in the budget.
Oh, there you go.
You can increase it. That's a minimum, but it's going to come from someplace.
It comes from somewhere, right.
Yeah, it's going to come from someplace.
There's the rub.
And we have put additional amounts in it at the end of the year, through year and transfers, and then, we put an extra quarter of $1 million in it, two budgets ago.
So, you look at the end of the year and see...
Sometimes you still money it. There's only a handful of towns that I can think of that are fully meeting their OPEB obligations right now.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
If you really want to look out, what you're probably projecting is when we finally, if ever, pay off our pension obligations, that money gets flipped over to OPEB.
So, that was the goal. That was supposed to be, years ago, it was supposed to be up in 2020...
2029, I think.
I think it's 30-something now.
No, they rolled it back.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, they rolled it back.
So, it's 2029, so it's actually within lifetime, June.
Right. So, when that, the plan was, when that happened, then that $7 million a year would go towards OPEB.
Right. And that would meet your annual required contribution or your RAC. So, the FY '19 budget provides level service programs and activities, incorporates operational maintenance costs for the new facilities, maintains allocations for road improvements and full shore protection. So, our road is about, almost $1 million for roadwork, 200 in the budget, 200 in the capital, and then, just over half a million in Chapter 90. Money's based upon a $200 million Chapter 90 bond, which the governor announced he's going to stay with, even though we've been trying to get up to 300 million. So, that's just the road improvements, and then, there'll also be some significant road work this year that you'll see for the water main projects that were done. Those roads will get done. People watching, we usually put down the water and sewer. They wonder why we don't pave it. It's better to let it sit for at least a year, so those trenches can pack, the road settles, and we'll come back. So, I know Kevin has a lot of paving scheduled for the coming spring or summer.
Let's hope we have good weather.
Yeah, because once one town gets pushed back, and every single town is pushed back that has that same contractor. So, we continue commitments to water and sewer infrastructure. We recognize and provide for our human service needs by the new full-time position in the Board of Health and the 10 hours of the Council on Aging, and we preserve initiatives previously supported with grant funding, the Coastal Resource Officer, and FACS. Five-year rolling capital plan, the general fund, we're recommending 4.2 million for general fund capital projects. I don't know if you want me to read all those. We can go through them quick. The road improvements and full shore, significant investment in our fleet needs, school, public safety communications, school technology and facilities. It includes $200,000 in borrowing, and the balances and available funds. And also, $500,000 for the architectural services for the new senior center. The building committee is meeting next week. They've narrowed down their choices for the OPM. We'll be discussing the OPM selection next week. For those who don't know how the process works, you first have to hire owner's project manager, and then, the owner's project manager helps you select an architect.
Is the Public Building Commission reviewing that? Is that who's...
That's, yeah.
Reviewing the OPM?
Yeah. They went through it last week, I believe, and then, we're meeting next week again on that. $5,850,450 in enterprise funds, well upgrades, fleet replacement, water meters and treatment plant repairs, sewer infrastructure, the continuing copper reduction at the treatment plant, and final-stage rehab of two pump stations. Waterways projects includes a new vessel for the harbor master. We are pursuing a grant for that, but we have funded it, I believe, fully in the budget, but we're going to continue to pursue grants, and we're putting a bug in Representative Lynch's ear on that. Additional piling replacements down on the harbor, sand blasting and painting at the transfer station, widow's walk, funding of construction of irrigation and design and engineering of potential upgrades at the facilities, including a clubhouse, accessibility issues, curb appeal, and parking. We got some money in there for that. I think we want to talk about at a later meeting is how we want to go about that, whether we want to put together a committee to look at. I do play golf. I've lost far too many balls at widow's walk that I haven't backed there in a while, but we might want to talk to some of the golfers and some of the people who run these type of facilities to help us come up with where we can best put our money to get a return on our investment.
Didn't you improve a golf course in your, in one of the, in Allenfield?
We took an 18-hole golf course, the old Colonial on 128, if anybody's familiar with it, where the sharing is, and we turned that into a $250 million shopping and living center, and we wrapped a nine-hole golf course around the back of it. So, we took, I think, five or six holes from the golf course, and then, we had to add two or three to it. But, we are in the process of looking to build a clubhouse there, is where we were at at that. But, the major part of that project was the mall.
Yeah, I'm not really sure we want to turn widow's walk into a mall.
Wheels tax revenue from the mall is really pretty good.
I bet it is.
I think our last estimate, we were getting almost $600,000 a year out of the mall, just on meal tax.
Just on meal tax?
On meal tax, yeah. Yeah, the total meal tax for the town is about $600,000. The two restaurants there were outside the mall have both closed. So, what we get from the subsales and stuff is incidental, but it's really just a, I don't talk a lot about it, but Apple paid $14 million to build their own building there and leave the North Shore Mall, because it's such a popular place to be, and the restaurants are just, they're just killing it up there. So, you think about it, but...
Nope.
Capital stabilization fund, we recommend $96,000 allocation for future use, and we're recommending almost 400 in the current plan. Special annual town meetings, we have 20?
20.
20. We have two petition articles. We were unaware of the other one when we put this presentation together, so... Budget. We're continuing to go through this, and as the numbers change, we'll be able to come back and tell you that there's money available here, but it's going to go over there. But, again, Nancy and Al did a lot of work on this, and it's in pretty good shape.
Can't thank you enough, Nancy, and Lorraine, and Michelle, and Antonetta. That helped put all the books together and collated all the information, too. So, it's a lot of work that you all...
Nancy all weekend in there.
Excuse me?
Nancy all weekend in there.
I know, Nancy. You do a fabulous job. We can't...
I just love the sound of her on Saturday.
We know Al's away, so we can't see our expression of gratitude, but...
I'm sure he'll watch it when he comes back.
I'm sure he will. We're must-see TV, so he will. Any questions for Jim and Nancy before we get into the details?
No, we should probably take a second and go over what the financial forecasting did. So, all this comes together when we get together with the assessor, the school committee, the school, who else is there? You, me, Pam, couldn't forget you, Pam.
Advisory.
Paul Donlin, advisory, assessor, and capital planning. So, we basically take this model, which is like the first page of the whole thing, put in the budget estimates, go over all the assumptions, and make sure at the end that the budget matches, and really give, end up giving Al, Tricia, Jim, the number that they have to meet, as well as the school department. It's a 2.17% increase. When did we meet last? December?
November.
November, end of November. And some of the stuff has changed, as Jim alluded to a minute ago. So, this is our best guess conservative estimate on what's going to happen, takes the levy into effect, and new growth and all that sort of stuff. So, this is really the driver of everything. Comes up with the numbers, and then, you know, Jim, Al, and Nancy make all the work based on that 2% increase.
Yeah, they're very conservative estimates, and as you said, I think the most critical part of developing the budget is you do your revenue projections first. That way, you get away from the temptation to say, "Well, I just need a couple for here, and I need a couple for here," and you try to grow your revenue to fit your spending. You set the revenue projections first, and then, the spending has to come in under that, and that's the best way to do it. It's the most conservative way to do it.
Right. And that's the way we do it, and then, what ends up happening is everyone, as mentioned earlier, we end up with a lot of free cash at the end, and then, we take that free cash and we roll it back to the community, usually in capital planning. The number that threw me off a little bit was the $5 million of capital spending that you mentioned, and that's because we have $3 million of free cash. And that'll be, that'll be spending that. We only spend...
We leave half a million in free cash at the end.
Yeah. And we, and that's typically what we've done over the last three or four, five years, because we only have about 1.4, 1.24-ish for level funding the budget and the capital plan of regular annual spending that keeps that at a curve level. So, kudos to all the people that helped with that process. Nancy, the leader of that, she puts a whole packet together that we look at 10 years worth of trends and talk about each thing in full detail. So, thank you for your work on that as well.
Thank you.
And Pam as well. Everyone takes their own little bucket and goes over it.
Great.
So, it's a 2.17% increase, I guess, is the net number, what you'll look at other communities and what they have to budget to. And unfortunately, the math gets, you know, just the cost-of-living increases for areas like the school, which 80% of their budget is payroll, you know, that's what they have to budget to.
Do you know what their budget message is? I know they started to talk about it last night, but I haven't seen, they usually, they used to do, you know, a Saturday budget session, but I don't know if they're still planning on doing that.
They do it every year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've had some preliminary discussions with the superintendent, but I haven't actually seen the numbers that come over from now.
Okay. Keep an eye on that. All right. Sean, do you have any questions? Karen?
I'm just trying to find, I didn't get someplace in here, to your point, didn't you give us a fact, a figure of what the fixed costs really are in the budget, percentage-wise?
Yeah.
And I just don't, like, there's a lot of paper here.
Obviously, put a percentage of dollar figure in there.
Yeah, maybe in the message itself.
I think it was somewhere in here, I remember. It's high, and that means everything else doesn't matter.
$1,000 for the fixed cost.
The increase, yeah, but the actual percentage of the budget, it is significant.
Yeah.
Good job.
Well, that's where, because we're not paying the principal on those notes, when that thing comes up, that's going to be a big dollar amount to hit the interest and debt and interest line, so...
That'll take up a big chunk. I'm assuming that it's been timed, the way it's been timed, to take advantage of some debt coming off, so it won't be as large a hit as otherwise would be, but I don't think it's enough to take the whole thing.
We've had some retirements. We can work on how we set up the amortization schedules to insulate this as much as possible, and also, we haven't been recommending borrowing the general fund portion of the capital plan. The most for our last two years, I think it was $400,000 last year, and then, it was $200,000 this year, and with the addition of the $500,000 from the SRF fund for the seawall. That's not too bad, considering the millions of dollars of capital work that we've done.
Right. But, to Jim's point, there's not a $75 million item that's coming off that's going to...
Not for another 22 years.
Not yet, for a while. Okay. Great. Thanks for the recap, the financial recap. And thank you. And we'll move into some detail. We'll take some folks out of order, but not everybody. We'll start, the first one is the assessors, and I know, Joe, is that you in the background? We haven't had a pleasure to meet you. So, welcome. We can give you a moment to sit down, and folks will find 141, which is the assessor's budget. So, Joe, we haven't had a pleasure of meeting, so welcome to Situate.
Thank you very much.
I would love just a little background about yourself, and before you go through your budget, got to bring...
Sure. I've been in and out of municipal government for well over 25 years. I started when I was 22. I'm 49 now. I started as the Town of Cohasset's first assessor, went to Watertown, became their assessor, and then, the extra duties of the assistant town major. Commute killed me, so I came back to Cohasset as their treasurer-collector. Learned that trade. Took a break from government for a while, then, served as Hull's interim assessor in 2010, 2011, and then, their assessor, excuse me, and then, their treasurer-collector, then, most recently, treasurer-collector in Watertown. So, I've got a lot of municipal experience. I've also served on Board of Assessors. In Watertown, actually, the full-time assessor is the chairman of the Board of Assessors. I served on the Board of Assessors in Hull as well for five years, a light board for too many years. After the first windmill, before, after actually both windmills. So, I had nothing to do with the ice or at the entrance to town. But, the one at the high school does make money, the one. The second one, probably should have borrowed money, but... So, yeah, and I also have been active in real estate my entire life. I got my real estate license when I was 19 years old. My family owns a real estate company. I will not do any real estate in the Town of Situate. This is my full-time job. You have my full-time commitment and efforts, especially, this is a revaluation year. I know how important that is to the town and the community. So, I made that promise to Nancy, to Jim, and, you know, you have my full attention. So, you'll never have any ethics or issues or anything like, any issues like that with me. I'm a straight shooter, hopefully a good communicator. I've got to know a lot of your town residents already, and very happy, I think I have a terrific staff. I just started last Tuesday, and already, it's, you know, I've realized what a great group of people here are here in the building.
I think you're following some good shoes, you know, filling some good shoes there.
I heard I have big shoes to fill, literally, you know, yeah.
And yes, yeah.
I think his might have been twice the size.
Should be an easy, hopefully, an easy, smooth transition for you.
Yeah.
Okay, so usually, we just, you know, if you just want to take us through, if there are any, you know, I know you just started, Joe, so no worries. If you just want to go through the numbers, that's fine. Usually, we just like to hear a little bit of your goals and object, what, goals and objectives?
Joe just started, no worries, but I just started, I'm expecting no worries.
Oh, I ignored that, clearly, of course. Like, did I say something wrong?
No, 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 no. I mean...
It must likely be by the way, Joe.
You had a storm to hide on.
To be honest with you, the goal, the main goal for our department for, you know, this upcoming fiscal year is the timely completion of the 2019 revaluation. We've already started this during the first week of my employment, sending out the necessary paperwork to residents. You may be getting phone calls, any person that, or a group of people that purchase property during calendar 2017, because the assessment date for 2019 is January 1st, 2018, so I have to send out sales verification questionnaires. Those are out. We've already sent out a big batch of form of lists, which are for second homes and other personal property. The Department of Revenue obviously wants to see a good sample to justify the 2% that we're tacking on for second homes for personal property. That will involve inspections and so forth, but right at the very beginning, and it's perfect on a rainy day like this to do a lot of the paperwork. My staff's been great. I've just been, you know, 300 of these, make 200 of those, and the RFP for revaluation services was completed today. It's going to be in a ledger, hopefully, any day now. It's on our website, so it's out there. I've moved up the timeframe from the proposed RFP that was on my desk when I started. You never know what's going to happen, you know, and I'd rather have a little breathing room, so that we can get our tax rate certified timely. breathing room so that we can get our tax rate certified timely. So, again, the due date for the values to submit is the end of September, and then with certification, end of October. That's, everything's been pushed back a month, and hopefully, the revale will start sometime in early April, which gives plenty of time. You know, we're looking to use consulting services for liaison-type work, collecting a lot of the data. The state requires a 25% field review, which is the bare minimum, but I think that will be acceptable this time, because the town went out and did 100% field review, which means looking physically from the outside, not measuring and listing, but looking at every single property. So, they did that in fiscal '15. Hopefully, you know, 25% will be enough. My duties will include a lot of field work, splits, new subdivisions, and also all the residential permits, which I think, even if the town had unlimited funds, I would still want to do that, because I need to know the town better than anyone. And you can't learn the town sitting behind a desk. So, that's my goal, is to hopefully get out tomorrow. If the ground's not too squishy, then I won't, you know, be on workers' comp my first week of employment, but I'm hoping to get out there soon.
Great. All right. We'll run through some of the numbers?
Sure. Sure, there's real, we're 97% salary, so there's not a whole lot of...
Yep. So, it looks like, you know, the department request and the town administrator is, gave you a little bit more. You're at $208,432, and the department requested $203,816. Is that the line we're going with?
Yes.
Yep.
So, 208 ties to the number?
Eighty-eight.
Did you want to see that?
No, yeah, just last year.
Okay. Yep, and that's down, and that's actually, what, $1,000 more than last year? 207,574. Okay. Anybody have any questions for Joe? It's pretty straightforward.
The only thing I noticed was somebody, something moved from part-time to full-time?
Yeah. We've been having part-time revendications that wasn't really classified correctly, so it was just moving them around. It's not a change in the number of staff they have on the number of hours. And the original departmental request was made on an estimate before Joe was hired, and then we had time to update it once Joe was hired.
Okay. Okay. Sean?
No, no, straightforward.
Karen?
Nope, you answered my second home question without asking.
And just for purposes, this is just review. We, what we do is we go through all the budgets. We review everything, and then at the end, we give a vote. I'm not sure if you're accustomed to that process, but that's pretty much what we do.
Every town has a different process, and, you know, Nancy was nice enough yesterday to explain the process here, and of course, I've asked some fellow department heads, and they all spoke highly of you, everybody that's behind me coming up, so.
That's nice of them.
Yeah.
All right, sounds great. I think you have a busy first couple of months in your job, and welcome.
First busy year, but I'll stay busy all the time.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Joe, it was nice meeting you. Thanks for coming in.
Nice to meet all of you as well.
We appreciate it. All right. So, Jessie, did you want to come up next? I know you've been sitting here for a while. Does anybody have an issue if I take this out a little bit out of order and bring Jessie up, so she can get home?
6:10.
All right, so 6:10 is the library. So, Jessie, you've had an exciting year.
Very exciting.
So, maybe you just want to review a couple of your goals and objectives for the upcoming year, and we have a great overview here, so thank you. And any budgetary concerns or highlights we'll go over after your overview. Does that sound good?
Great. So, the biggest and top goal of the library in this fiscal year is going to be the strategic planning process. So, that's a requirement of the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. Even if it wasn't, it's a great thing for us to do, especially at this point in time. We're in this new, beautiful facility. It's opened up a lot of new doors for us, but what we really want to know is, how does the community want us to move forward? What should our focuses be? What should our goals and objectives be according to their desires? So, what we'll be doing is, we'll be putting together our community planning committee. We'll be hoping to wrap in people from literally all walks of the community, seniors, parents of young children, even people who don't use the library. We want to hear what they have to say, because it's not just the materials that we have now. We also have all of these wonderful spaces. So, even people who are not necessarily big readers are now coming in to use our facility. Just in the last week, we've had, you know, probably 60 to 75 teens a day coming in to study for midterms that we haven't seen yet. So, it's wonderful to see all of the people using the facility in many, many different ways. So, we want to hear from them, and we want to start to write that plan. It's going to be due October 1st to the state. We'll be submitting it to the town administrator, as well as the library board of trustees, and I'm sure we'll also be getting a copy to you all for your review. But in the end, we want it to reflect what the community wants and needs from the library. So, that's really the biggest goal. And then, we also have some things that we committed to as part of the building project that we said, "Sounds great on paper, but those are things we really need to tackle once we're already in the facility." One of those things being self-checkout stations. So, there are a couple of things that are sort of automations that libraries are doing that we've committed to do as part of the library building project, and one of those is, it's called self-pickup of holds. Many other libraries around us are doing this. It's basically an area where, instead of coming to the desk and asking us to get your holds for you, you would go to a shelf. You would take those items off of the shelf, and once we have self-checkout stations, you could literally go and check those items out, just like you would in a grocery store. You would always have the option of coming to the desk and getting direct assistance from us, and in fact, the self-checkout stations will be located right next to the desk, so we'll be there to provide assistance. But we will be looking at a variety of different options for that. There are, especially with smartphones, there are a lot of new options that are coming out that are a little more cost-effective than some of the more traditional. There are a lot of 3M systems out there that are quite costly. I just attended a webinar last week for a system that is smartphone-based, and actually has an iPad that you can set up. So, not that there is no cost there, but it is much less minimal than a huge system. So, we're really going to explore all of the options and what works best for our library and the community. So, we'll be doing that over the course of the year. And then, our last goal is a bit of a fun one. We want to do a maker fair at the library, and if you don't know what a maker fair is, it's really an opportunity to showcase all of the local artisans and the talent, as well as a variety of technology in the library, because, you know, one of the things that the library really strives to be is a place that supports entrepreneurs, a place that supports STEM and STEAM-related activities, and this is basically a day to celebrate all of those things, but also to give people in the community an opportunity to try things for themselves. So, it's really just kind of a big fair showcasing all of those different things, and we'd really like to try that for ourselves. I've been to one in Portland Public Library in Maine that was just phenomenal, and there are many all across the country, and we just have so many local artisans that we really feel like Situate is a great place to do it. The South Shore has so much around us, so we're hoping to make that happen. It will require quite a bit of effort. We also are hoping to look for business sponsors, which the Portland Public Library did to great success, and that would obviously defray any costs associated with it. So, those are our main goals for that fiscal year.
And would that be set up, would the maker fair be set up throughout the library, or just in the large, larger rooms?
Everywhere, all over the libraries. So, activities related to children, we would put in the children's room, but really, we would encompass the entire space, including the outside, as long as weather permitted.
That sounds great. That's nice. Sounds like a icy gun. Anything else that you want to cover? You got your three goals, which is excellent.
I would like to mention a couple of things. Just, I've given you the numbers, the rough numbers, for some of what we've done since opening, but I did want to mention that circulation has increased by 22% since we opened the doors. Computer use has increased by 40%. Visits are a little more difficult to measure. I think I mentioned in my report, we're having some difficulties with what's called our people counters. So, the things that count folks as they come through the doors, which is, we have to have those. It's a requirement of the state that we report those numbers every year. And I'm actually working with a company right now. They just sent us out new devices that they think are better suited to the environment that we have. So, I think that we'll work that out, but we're estimating, there are days when it works better than others. So, we're estimating between 350 to 500 visitors a day in this facility, and, you know, some days more, some days less, but those are, that's a pretty good average of what we're doing right now.
And would you say that was increased? Is that a...
It's hard to know what an increase that is over, certainly over Jericho Road, because we didn't have a people counter device there, and over previously at Branch Street, you know, it might be something like a 20% increase, but again, without really having that hard data, I'll be able to answer that question better next year, I think.
Next year, okay.
But certainly, we are, you know, seeing a lot of increases in the use of the facility. And really, you know, this is just more of an observational thing, but we do have a lot of people who are coming in. They're not necessarily checking out materials, but they're booking the study rooms. They're using the study tables. They're sitting at the windows. They're using our Wi-Fi. We also don't have a way, I'm going to talk to Bill about this, but we don't have a way to track Wi-Fi use, but I have no doubt that it's an exceptional amount of Wi-Fi use that we get in the library. So, we certainly are seeing, you know, if you build it, they will come. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that the building is getting extensive use.
Great. Does anybody have any questions before we dive into the numbers for Jessie?
She answered my question.
Okay.
Yep.
Karen?
Of course I do.
But I'll be quick, just a quick question. You mentioned the recommendation of looking at a substitute library staff. Is, how does that impact the budget, if at all, and are those numbers, it's a recommendation, so I imagine it's not in your numbers?
When I worked on the budget with Al, we actually left money in the budget for that purpose. We actually retooled the entire part-time allocated line, so I actually think there's a slight decrease overall in the personnel budget, because we looked at Sunday hours, which we haven't had in years because of the library being closed for the renovation, and we took a hard look at that and said realistically, "What do we need in that line?" It was slightly overinflated from what we thought we needed, so we were able to pare that down a bit, and we still left money in, just in case it was determined that a subhole was something that would be viable for the library.
Jessie, can you expand? And that was one of the things that stuck out to me, was the Sunday hours. So, what are they going to be, what are the expectations for the citizens to have the library open on Sundays?
The money is in the budget. We're open on Sundays now, 1:30 to 5:00, which is historically what we've been open, and I see no reason that that would change.
All year round?
No, not all year round. It's just the majority of the school year, so October through the end of April.
Okay. Is there any chance to get that to be all year round?
I believe that would have to be negotiated with the unions, because I believe that it's currently written into the union contract that that is the current course of the year, so.
That may be, I mean, hire new people, I mean, more people, if that's what...
Put it on the list. Contract expires, we'll put it on the list, but...
So, is there a contract that says you can't be open at a certain time?
I believe the contract says this is when we have Sunday hours, from this time to this time. That's if I, the date ranges, the library's open on Sundays, so you have to expand that. And then, you also have to obviously put the money in the budget, because the budget's only funded with the hours they have.
So, what is the time on that? It's from October...
The beginning, the first Sunday in October to the last Sunday in April.
If you can, if we can note that, to look into that, that's...
Just for purposes of just summarizing your numbers, Jessie, just for the mimming audience. So, this year, current, the current revised budget for this year was $1,009, if you will, and your 2019 requested budget or approved budget right now is $1,036, which is about a 6% increase.
Yes.
Most of the bigger hits are in utilities for electricity, natural gas, and also some office machines, which I imagine will, just as a result of the new building as well.
We have a number of increases in just the maintenance contracts that we're responsible for as part of this building. I do think that after this year, we'll have a much better understanding of what our actual gas costs will be. I think they're going to be lower than what we're projecting, but having not gone through a winter when we put this budget together, we really wanted to be conservative. So, that number may, we may be able to tweak that in next year's budget.
Okay.
The electricity costs unfortunately are running pretty close to what is being projected.
Projected right now, okay. All right. Any questions, guys?
Well, I just noticed that the, Nancy, you may know this, it looks like the office machines and the repair and maintenance kind of, you broke that into two different...
Jessie did a lot of reclassifications of her budget to try to get the costs into the correct credit lines. We appreciate her input if you're doing that.
So, the...
It looks like a balance.
The utilities, so in 2017, that's the utilities in the old library, not the...
At Jericho Road.
Jericho Road.
That's Jericho Road, okay. What were they, so they must have been 37 in the previous building?
Utilities at Jericho was...
Yeah, we were paying utilities there. I don't remember if we were paying everything, but we were definitely paying electricity.
So, the increase is more from the 37 to the 44, and the 13 to the 15, as opposed to the actuals? So, it's not as traumatic?
Were you thinking about we'd be able to longer in fiscal '18?
Yeah. What's down in the, the, one, two, three, third grouping, it says special AG.
That's books, audio, it's all of our materials.
Special agency supplies.
Oh, okay. Right. And then, the printing went down considerably, from $3,000 or $4,000 to 500. What was that?
That was partially based on this reclassification of some of the categories, and also the fact that we're using a lot of contracts that incorporate those materials within the contract. So, some of that's reflected in office machine maintenance versus printing in forms.
And just the staff in general, is there been any increase in staff? I see there's one vacant position. Is...
Not anymore, but...
Yeah.
Yes.
But it's the same number of employees that were manning the old library on Branch Street. That's great, and I love the fact, the Sunday hours, and I'm really impressed by the number of people that go there every day. I wouldn't have guessed, I would have guessed a lot less. 300 to 500 people a day has got to be the busiest place in town, then.
It's very busy.
It's great.
But, you know, it's comfortable. We have plenty of space for people to work and do their business, so it's nice.
Phenomenal. Great.
Just, I should know this, but the square footage from the old library to the new one was about the, well, you didn't use a lot of the lower space, so.
Right, it's really only about 7,000 square feet more than the original building.
Which is quite a bit, but I, just the jump in electricity with all-new lighting and everything else, I'm surprised it's not about the same, you know.
It's, 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 the space that's used now, as you say, the lower level was almost completely unattractive.
Other than that green carpeted room there.
Right, right.
Indoor outdoor carpets.
The AstroTurf. Yeah, but the lights, there's quite a bit more lighting, I think.
No, I just, it's, you know, it's too bad it didn't, a little less, but there's what it is.
I know that Kevin Kelly is exploring some energy savings for the library, you know, maybe not today, but in future years, especially if you have to go to replace systems. So, you know, there could be things, tweaks made in the future that will help with that.
Good difference, good.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, Jessie, you've been busy. You've had a great year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And look forward to the Makers Fair. That sounds exciting. I'll let you guys know.
Definitely, please do.
Thank you so much.
All right. Have a great night. So, do we want to take Kathy Curran, town clerk, and then we'll do Whittle's Walk, and then we'll go through the regular ones? Does that sound good?
Sure.
Okay. Kathy, you want to come up?
Sure.
So, 161.
It's like a hymnal.
Excuse me?
Looks like a hymnal, a melody.
Song, never mind.
She said 161.
161, which I can never, here it is. It's always tucked in here. So, Kath, I just, I think if you can just go over a couple of your goals, I, we obviously, I think, know what you do as the town clerk, working very hard. So, if you could just go through your goals for 2019, that would be great.
Yes, sure, I'd be happy to. Goal number one is my certification, a Mass Municipal, CMMC, Certified Mass Municipal Clerk. I've tried taking it the first time. I call that my practice run. I actually just took it again, so I'm hoping to hear for the certification by March, and that would obviously be, it was put in my budget, there's $1,000. It's Mass General Law Acceptance that we did for the clerk. So, anyway, I'm keeping my fingers crossed how to get my certification. So, I just took the test. I finished it and mailed it off about three days ago, so. Staff training, that is continuous. We have so many changes with a lot of its elections. Not so much vital records, that's been stabilized for the last couple of years, but also for early voting. Early voting is going to happen definitely for the November election this fall, and there's a possibility they're putting new legislature through for the primary, instead of two weeks prior to the general election, or, excuse me, the state election in November, which is when the early voting period goes. For a primary, this wasn't supposed to happen for a primary, but now they're trying to push a legislature through. It will be five days before a primary for early voting. I don't necessarily agree with it. I don't think it's necessary, because we have the absentee so much sooner than we have early voting, so. absentee so much sooner than we have early voting, so. But that's most likely going to happen, but it's not a definite, it hasn't been approved yet. But we have to train again on early voting, because we only had that one, we've only done it once for the general election in 2016, so.
That went pretty smoothly, though, I thought.
It was.
Yeah.
It's like on a wing and a prayer, that was, that went very well. Considering how small our parking lot is, and how small Town Hall is, it was two weeks of noise, a little bit of noise in the hall, it did go very smoothly, the election workers did great, the public was very happy with it, we did, what, forty, forty-six hundred voters came through our doors for early voting. That's a lot. That's a lot.
Twelve thousand?
At the time, I think we had fourteen thousand voters, thirteen thousand voters, something like that, yeah. So that was a lot, it was a huge success. Was it a lot of work? Absolutely, because we had to put those ballots somewhere. And we're spatially challenged in the clerk's office, so to secure them every night was a challenge. But, so, continued training in the State's Voter Registration Information System, like I said before, I have a new full-timer, and she's, Heather Nugent, she's wonderful, and so her training continues, it's ongoing. Because it's, a lot of it's seasonal, too. Like, right now, we're teaching her how to process the censuses that are being returned.
Right.
Okay, so, the other, goal number three, the security of the election equipment, not so much the machines. So the machines are in those, you know, those plastic outdoor storage sheds that you have? Well, we acquired two of them, Bernice did, the former Town Clerk acquired two of them. So I have election supplies in one, and I have the new DS two hundred election machines in the other, all locked and bolted.
And where are they?
They're in the basement, this end. My other, my only concern is the ballot bins that the machines go on. Those are stored in the garage, open, wide open, with a plastic sheet over them that says property of the Town Clerk. If a beach sign, where Recreation is storing their signs against the wall in the basement, if one of those falls inadvertently on those machines, because they're all up against the wall, and dents the machine, I mean, the bin, the machines will not fit on the bins, and you will not be able to cast a ballot through. So, I'm going.
They make machines, didn't we just buy new ones?
Yeah, but the, but the machines sit on a bin?
Yep.
That hold the ballots when you vote. So now I got to find a secure spot. I have the old bins down there, which I've been trying to give away to other Town Clerks, because they take up so much space. I can move, actually, I think I just solved a problem. If I can't fit them in the vault, which I don't think I can, because they're kind of bulky, I think I'll switch them out with the blue ones, move the blue ones over where the lifeguard signs are, and move these closer to the shed, and it'll be a little bit more secure. But that's my biggest concern. Those are very expensive, I'm trying to keep them safe and usable at all times. So, we've got some reorganizing to do in the vault, and see where we can make some space in there to see if I can roll them in there. I think it's too tight, but I'm going to try that. So that's coming down the pike this summer when things quiet down before the fall elections. So those are my three major goals so far. Budget, talk about the budget components.
Yes.
So the, basically the financial challenges I have for the office in regard to salaries this year is, I'm hoping by May to appoint Heather Nugent, the Assistant Town Clerk, which normally comes with a step in a grade increase. So she's very well suited to the position, she's up for the challenge of it, she's very efficient, she is eager to learn all the time. So I think she's a great fit for the job, and it's a good opportunity for her.
Were you an assistant before?
I was. I've been in the office, this is my twelfth year, and I was the Senior Clerk for two years, and then Bernice appointed me the Assistant Town Clerk in 2008. And then Bernice had emergency heart surgery before, I think it was the fall of eleven, and I was made from, Rick, the Town Administrator, appointed me Temporary Town Clerk while she was recuperating. And then you know the rest, I ran for election when Bernice retired, so.
Okay. Great.
Yeah.
All right, so just to run down the numbers for folks, just to summarize it, 2018 this year is a hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and one dollars. We've got two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars as your 2019 budget, which is a 21% increase. So it looks like some of the biggest hits. What are the support services, is that the training?
No, you know, support services is what we pay out for, for example, ballot programming for the town election.
Okay, so for the elections.
Ballot printing, town meeting, sound system, if we have it at the gym, that's put in there every year. Purchasing services.
Why is it up eleven thousand?
We have three elections this year, and we have early voting for the fall election. That's going to cost four thousand dollars right there for staffing. Because you have to have, the mandate for staffing for early voting is similar to, well, not similar, it's, you have to have a person for every precinct to check in people. And you have to have it for the times, the hours of early voting, which is basically, what is it, forty hours a week, sometimes on Saturdays? So that's the increase there. The presidential election, early voting staffing was almost, I think it was sixty-nine hundred dollars. And that was for the two weeks before the general election, so.
But that was last year, right?
That was in November of sixteen. So this fall's early voting starts, I think it's October twenty-seventh, but don't quote me on that. It's eleven business days prior to the November sixth election. And you staff six workers for checkers, you staff somebody to take, check the ballots out, you have somebody, you usually have eight people.
But it's eleven thousand dollars more than the seventeen last year.
And then we're asking also for an increase in election worker's salary, they're, right now, they're making nine dollars an hour. And I did a benchmark survey on what the area towns pay their town election workers, and, nope, that's Town Clerks. Foxborough, Duxbury, Sharon, Plymouth, Norwell, Halifax, Canton, Barnstable, Avon, I could go on and on, they all pay at least eleven dollars an hour. The wardens are anywhere between twelve and thirteen, some pay sixteen, some places pay seventeen. So we're asking for eleven dollars an hour for our checkers and clerks, and then twelve dollars an hour for the deputy wardens and thirteen.
So that all falls into that support services line?
No, support, that's personnel. You're still talking about support services, sorry. So you're talking about eleven thousand up for the support services?
Yep.
I'm guessing that's just the three elections. I mean, I put in the details for the police as well, I put in, we have one town election, so the ballots, and again, four thousand is, two thousand dollars a night for the sound system, if the annual town meeting is at the gym, the high school gym. So it's a cost of elections. Programming and ballot printing.
So there were two last year?
That one was a special. Right? What did we have last year? We had the annual town election. What was last year, 2017? So the only scheduled election we had last year was the annual town election, and then we ended up having two specials, no, one special, one special, a town special.
Special election, or no?
Special election, in September.
Yeah.
The twentieth reflective of the year, there was a presidential.
Right, so it was twenty, seventeen, twenty-eight.
Correct, yeah, that was expensive.
Right.
The last three years are twenty, seventeen, now twenty-eight.
Oh, do I have my breakdown with me, I do. I have my purchase of services worksheet.
Kathy is support.
Oh, you're so good.
Just agree.
Now, I have my support sheet here somewhere.
Get it.
Okay, so I have six thousand in program encoding for chips for elections.
So the special was in September.
Go ahead, Kathy.
So, here's my breakdown for support services. Free elections, two thousand dollars per election for program encoding, the thumb drives for the machines. I have four thousand dollars for a sound system for the two nights of the annual town meeting. The census preparation was twenty-four hundred dollars. The food costs for the meals, actually, food costs went up, and so I've been trying to cut food costs by just getting pizza for one meal for the election workers, except... So for town elections, you know, I'll ask the poll, I always be stopped at five, you know, if we go to six, I have to feed the election workers. And the food costs went sky-high, they're charging overtime, because it's a Saturday election, for the staff, which is, you know, it is what it is. But it was like seven or eight hundred dollars, and I'm like, oh. So I'm trying to buy pizza and bring a cooler of water, so, but I have twenty-seven hundred in for food, which is approximately five hundred dollars per lunch, six hundred dollars for dinner. Maintenance contract, oh, that's what it was, too. I finally have to pay after two years, the maintenance contract for, two thousand dollars for the, for ESNS to service our election machines, because our two-year grace period of having free services expired. And ballot printing for the town elections, ballot printing has gone up, and I've put in twenty-five hundred dollars for ballot printing. The state pays for state elections ballot printing. Custodial services for three elections might be a little high, because I'm not, is it three, oh, one town meeting, a second night, and a special town meeting, and three elections. I put three thousand in, it's usually five hundred dollars an event, because I'm not quite sure yet, I haven't got my feet wet with the cost for the Performing Arts Center. I got a bill for technical services for four hundred and seventy-six dollars, but I didn't get a custodial bill. So that balanced out when we had it over there. But yet, if we have the annual town meeting at the gym, I get a custodial bill usually for setup or breakdown on off-hours, and that's usually about five, four to five hundred dollars. So for the one, two, five events, I've put in three thousand dollars. That might be a little high, custodial service, I might get away with twenty-five hundred, because I'm still getting my feet wet with that Performing Arts Center, so. Police details, that's really high, because I put eight hours times three hundred and fifty dollars for three elections, and two are sixteen-hour state elections, basically, from start to finish, and three town meeting nights. So, that was fifty-six hundred dollars for police.
And, did you say we rent equipment for two thousand dollars a night?
We've always done that, before I was even Town Clerk, that's John Capelupo, he does the entire sound for the gym. The thing that, with John is, he doesn't, he has the hearing impaired headsets as well now, that he provides. I have checked into Sit TV, I have checked into the new Performing Arts Center to see, for example, if we decided never to use the gym again, all right, for town meetings, and you have a large town meeting anticipated, where you have an override question, say, even if it's a special, you're going to get a huge turnout. The gym holds twelve hundred, we know that, and we know the Performing Arts Center is seven hundred and change. So we overflow the Performing Arts Center on a busy town meeting, and where are we going to go? The only thing we have, and Seth doesn't have it for Sit, he doesn't have the equipment to, I don't think even do a satellite audio to the cafeteria where the overflow would be, because it's the closest proximity to the Performing Arts Center, or even to the small gym. So, we have had a, well, since I've been in office and also before, we've had to set up the, we've always had the larger town meetings at the gym, twelve hundred people, and now we're anticipating on an override question, oh, we're going to have overflow even from that. So we've set up the small gym as a satellite, which is right through the double doors, you're done. But that's only audio as well. But it's first come, first served. Whoever wants to see the town meeting goes in the big gym and gets there early, and if not, you're in the small gym listening to it. So we're setting it up with tellers, with John Capelupo's equipment, you know, extra And that's our safeguard, and that's why it's, it is, it's two thousand dollars a night. And I have asked around to see if we can find anybody else for a town meeting at the gym. So when that goes to a second night, it's still two thousand dollars, nineteen hundred and fifty.
For the second night? So, when we're at the, we're at the Performing Arts Center, they don't have microphones for us?
No, this is for, I put it in for, I put John Capelupo's money, cost in, in case we have it back at the high school. Because that's the two thousand dollars a night. At the Performing Arts Center, all I do is pay tech fees, they have all the microphones and everything, and it was what I said, four hundred and seventy-six dollars.
So we can take a look at that when we.
So it's pros and cons, I mean, it's.
It seems like there's, if we had to tighten our belt, there's probably some wiggle room in that budget.
In the purchase of services, yeah, I probably estimate it high on the police, and maybe, because I'm not really good at the police part, because sometimes I get billed and sometimes I don't, and I don't know, so. I just, to be safeguard, I don't want to get billed and not have enough money in there, that's my biggest concern. Because their overtime is based on like forty dollars an hour.
What else? What in this?
Yeah, the detail, so, that's what gives me a little anxiety.
A little anxiety?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a tad.
Okay.
But as far as, I mean, you can't change the ballot printing, you can't change the maintenance on the DS two hundred election machines, some things are set in stone, you know.
So, can I ask?
Sean, do you have some questions?
So Kathy, did you always set up for the small gym? Let's say we're, the pack's not ready. All right, so, when was the last time we've had overflow?
Actually, we didn't, it was, no, we haven't, we didn't. We had, I think it was the school, was it the school?
It was the school override in two thousand.
It was. And we never needed it, which was great, because, you know, you want people to be able to attend the meeting and not just listen to it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But you will run into that problem, though.
No, no, no.
Karen?
Nope.
Well, there's one of the line, the part-time employees, that's up twenty-three thousand dollars?
Excuse me, let me see what we got here. Okay, so let's go back to the four thousand, no, that's not it, sorry, I'm thinking of early voting. Yes, early voting.
Right.
It's the early voting, it's going to cost about sixty-nine hundred dollars to do early voting for that state race in the fall. That's why it's up again. If you look at, let's compare it to, what was it, fiscal seventeen? And then I have the change of rates as well, that I'm requesting for the election workers.
Because that's the election workers' rate. She's paying minimum wage.
It's going up a dollar or two an hour.
We weren't paying minimum wage.
It's going up to minimum wage.
Okay. That's proposed.
Right.
But that's, that's a twenty-three thousand dollar increase?
With the combination of the change in rates and the fact that she's got more elections. In fiscal eighteen, she didn't have the same number of elections.
I see it, I think it's high, but, I mean, I mean, the whole budget's going up twenty-two percent.
Which we do have increases in the Town Clerk's budget, but we do have more elections, but we can certainly review this with Kathy again. And if there's anything that changes, we'll let you know.
Okay. I think that makes sense.
Ms. Kathy's staff for the committee on Thursday, same question.
Right. You know, those part numbers out there that you can't grab.
Yeah, I mean, maybe there's a sheet you can give us, to kind of, you're reading it, but we don't see it.
Yeah. I can do that, I have it broken down. I know it's in my pile somewhere, absolutely.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Kathy.
No, you're welcome.
I don't, do you?
No.
Okay, so we'll go over it.
That sounds good, thanks Kathy.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Okay. Widows Walk, right?
Yes.
All right. Bob?
Hello?
How are you?
Good, cool.
Happy New Year.
Cool.
Nice to see you.
Good to be here.
So one second, just going to grab it, it's probably.
In the back.
Down the back, called Enterprise. So if you want to, Bob, give us a little bit of overview of your goals and your projections for the upcoming year.
This was kind of an unusual year for me, in that I've just got one rather extensive goal. It has many facets to it, and, you know, with the, with the goal being to make Widows Walk more inviting and functional, basically, I think that all would agree that Widows Walk's always had the appearance of not ever being finished, out at the street anyways, from the street looking in. So now that our, our original construction debt is finally retired, it's time to. So now that our, our original construction debt is finally retired, it's time to, you know, see what we can do to make some improvements that will hit people right in the face. I must say that when I see surveys done, one of the most important parts of the golf facility is the curb appeal. And certainly, there's never been anything at the street that would invite anybody in. So I don't, I mean, I think now with that original three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar a year debt service off the table, I think we could, you know, float a new bond that we could make some nice improvements that will really hit people in the face and make the place far more functional. So it would, it would involve the curb appeal right out at the street, doing some, some nice plantings and what have you that would be relatively low maintenance, kind of in keeping with what we have at Widows Walk, meaning very environmentally friendly and kind of having the tall fescue look and that type of stuff. But, you know, you can do it with, with grasses and the like. Certainly, to finish off the parking lot and have a nice smooth surface, it's going to be a heck of a lot safer. While we're talking about safety, actually, we could really improve the safety issues at the street as well, probably block off one of the entrances, I should say exits. I mean, we could entrance, we could enter from that side, but it's not, I think it'd be best to just block off the, the exit that is closest to the harbor. And just maybe widen the one entrance a little bit. And there are some issues with, you know, the speed of the traffic and the visibility from that side, so it's kind of an accident waiting to happen, so. But to improve the appearance there and certainly the safety, I mean, there's potholes out there and things that, it always concerns me that, you know, somebody could get hurt out there. The clubhouse, you know, other than just prettying it up from the exterior, which certainly needs some, some work, but to make it a little bit larger, you know, we have, we have talked with some people, some architects, and just to give some ideas on what they thought we could do there. I think it could be done with the same footprint and be done fairly affordably. And, you know, make it large enough so that you could accommodate a full field golf tournament. We really haven't been able to attract outings successfully primarily because if we were to fill the golf course, let's just say with a hundred and twenty-plus golfers, sometimes they, there are additional patrons that want to come for the, for the dinner and the auctions and that type of thing. And so you need a facility that would, would seat probably a hundred and fifty people. So I think that would be a goal, and I, you know, I can't tell you how many calls I get with people interested in having outings at Widows Walk, and they just don't want to come and play their golf in one location and then have to pick up and leave and go to another location for the larger groups, so. The, it also would involve some, the clubhouse, I'd like to explore maybe putting some solar panels on the roof. We use a lot of electricity primarily because of the electric cart charging. It would be a good opportunity, it needs a new roof anyways, and to maybe put the solar panels on there and make us pretty self-sufficient in that regard, I think it would be nice. The, it would also involve some course improvements. Our tees through the years, there's been a lot of settling, and I think that it'd be good to, you know, to do, I mean, bunkering in tees, and I hate to disappoint, but I don't know if we, I think Widows Walk is always going to be a difficult golf course. We're dealing with a-
And I'm a lousy golfer, so it doesn't go together.
I was going to suggest that maybe we need to work on the swing rather than widen the course, but, believe me, I would love-
Probably.
New boss, Bob.
Really. I would love, I would love to-
No offense taken, trust me.
I really would love to make the golf course a little bit easier, it's just, I think the architect did a good job. He had to either remove a lot of the trees and make the golf course fairly dangerous with balls coming from one fairway to the other, or work on forcing people to manage their golf game and-
It's a very, you know, very articulate way to say that.
So it's, at any rate, it's, I must say that, you know, a fairly high percentage of golfers, I can see where they, they really can't enjoy the golf course on a regular basis. I think that through the years, we've come up with a pretty good loyal following, and people have learned how to play the golf course, and believe me, they're not all great golfers, but they, they've learned how to play it and enjoy it, and, and a lot of them find more golf balls than they lose, so. But it's, so, I mean, certainly some improvements from the standpoint of leveling tees and, and maybe some bunker improvements and things like that.
And are those improvements in your operational piece, or is this going to all be looked at from a capital loss perspective?
Well, I think the on-course improvements could possibly go into the, you know, the contract for, for maintenance is going to go up for bid, it might be something we'd want to incorporate into that. The rest of it, I think, would need to go into, you know, possibly a bond. And the last thing, all of the things that we just mentioned, you know, the customer base is going to notice right away, the most expensive out of all of these facets is going to be the new irrigation system. You know, we are at the end of the useful life of our irrigation system. They're extremely expensive, as you saw, to the tune of about two million dollars. The good news is that they're far more efficient than what they were putting in back when Widows Walk was built. I think what you'd find is that they'll be more efficient with the water usage, it'll give us better coverage of the entire golf course. Right now, each year, anytime there's any kind of a, you know, it doesn't even have to be an extended drought, but just a, even a fairly short drought will start losing grass on the edges and it makes for kind of some unsightly areas. I think those type of areas could be improved to the point where we'll have, you know, really playable grass from tree line to tree line. So.
Bob, can I ask you a quick question on the point before? I was on a committee probably ten years ago where we talked about, you know, the redesign of Widows Walk. Do you think that the difficulty of the course impacts the revenue that it can generate?
I do. I mean, I certainly think that, as I said, there's a high percentage of golfers that really can't enjoy Widows Walk on a regular basis.
And I know, I know, really, until this year, we haven't had the funds to either really consider it, because it costs, I mean, go to any hole and say, well, we can make a better landing area or whatever, it costs tens of thousands of dollars that wasn't there. Is, I think what I'd like to see at some point is some sort of strategy for you down that path where if you could make these six improvements, it's going to make the course a little bit easier and maybe have an impact on sales. I mean, there's nothing more frustrating than being a, you know, a twelve handicap and going out and shooting a hundred and four, you know, at a course.
I think, you know, certainly there are some environmental issues there, as you know, but I think the irrigation system alone will make it a little bit better, because if we've got better grass on the edges, it'll keep the ball from, from bounding into the tree line as, you know, as opposed to staying into the, you know, into the rough and-
But I'd just be interested, and not, not today, but I'd be interested if you said, you know, I think on these three or four holes, if we could invest this much in it, it may make it, you know, an easier play for people, and it may make it more enjoyable for the, for the hacker, not the hacker, but the, the hacker, yeah, John.
Yeah, we, there's no question, we'd love to do, you know, what we can, and certainly the people who've been playing there from the get-go, you know, they comment all the time on-
Well, some people play it very well, you know, it's-
Yeah. You know some of them very well.
I just hit the ball as far as I can and see where it goes.
But I think that'd be interesting, because that's what we tried to do those years ago, like, oh, if you had on hole four, if you did this. From your opinion, it'd be interesting if you said, here's, and it's going to be a long-term play, but it'd be interesting to get, you know it better than anybody else. You know where the balls are hidden, so if you-
I think, you know, certainly anything we can do to, you know, to clear out areas and, you know, make it easy to find balls and so on, but it's, I will say that I don't think it'll ever be-
Green Harbor. It's not going to be Green Harbor, but-
No. It's never going to be, let's put it this way, I'd say it's always going to be on the top twenty percentile of difficulty, I think.
But I think if you had a million dollars or whatever the number is, if you could make five changes on it, you could probably make it a little bit easier, I'd be interested to see that.
No, it'd be great to, you know, I would, I would love to make it more playable for the masses.
Because I think it does make it difficult for, for the average-
Tony, let me get to that point. If you had a million dollars or X amount of dollars, would your first choice be to, you know, do something with the clubhouse or do what Tony just said, you know? You know, some people look at it as a challenge, oh, jeez, I only lost ten balls today, you know? You know, last week was twenty.
Good day.
You know, so you know what I mean? And I wanted to ask you right in the beginning, do you, are you in favor of a committee, or do you think you and certain folks in town hall? Because people have approached us and said, "Form a committee," to, you know, to take it, you know, now that the bond's paid for, you know, that's what you need to do, so.
Actually, per Al Bangert, when he was in the acting role, town administrator, he asked me to form a small committee, and he was going to, you know, talk about forming, you know, getting a liaison, and I think John Dennehy has been very active with this. He's, he's been very interested in it and been looking forward to when the debt was retired. I think we kind of got held back a little bit, the drought of two thousand and sixteen and the impact on our revenues. I think it, you know, the plan originally was to start the ball rolling last fall. And I think that now it'd be nice if we could get going as soon as possible, to try to come up with a consensus as to, you know, you know, how much money do we need to borrow to make the, make the improvements that we need and-
To see the biggest return.
Yeah, and if, my own opinion, if I was going to, the money that I would spend first would be from the street to the clubhouse. I think that the golf course is going to, I think it'll, I think it'll impact our revenues more to pretty the place up and have a functional clubhouse that's going to attract some, some new revenue.
And then you said something on the same footprint. You don't mean the square footage of the clubhouse now.
No, but it's, no, there's, I mean, you can just take the decking right now, and you could enclose that, and then, and then, once you get the bathrooms out of where they are and put them on the other side of the building, that opens up some more space, you could then wrap a deck around, because now you don't have the bathrooms on, on the corner there.
Okay.
And it's the best view in the clubhouse, and it's occupied by the bathrooms right now, so. So I, you know, Donald Walter, you know, looked at it for us and he quickly came up with a lot of really good ideas. And, you know, we don't, we don't need to gain that much square footage to be able to take a full field outing. Right now, we've got an occupancy of eighty, and not only that, it would make, it would make it more inviting. You could, you could enter from the drift side, the-
The opposite side.
Dribbly side of the, of the facility rather than going around that, the entrance that we have now and things, so. But yeah, that, it would be, my first priority would be there.
Well, I think we all agree with you, so look forward to seeing this committee come together and get some real ideas and numbers and plans in front of everybody. So you want to go over your revenues quickly and then we'll go over your budget, Bob? Look like we've got some revenue increases projected in half the year and not even half the year.
I mean, when you look, I mean, you look at the revenues from, the actual revenues from FY sixteen and seventeen, FY sixteen was an unbelievable year, everything was in our favor. We had a very long season, we had very few rainouts and that type of thing, so we can't expect that type of, that type of activity each year. And then FY seventeen was horrendous.
Yeah. That drought, right?
Yes. So I actually tried to kind of project something somewhat in the middle, although with a, with a increase in our season pass dues, I made it a little bit, little bit more in line with the FY sixteen. So I don't think there's anything that significantly difference, different. I feel like our greens fees are priced in line. I think that, I think that our best value up there right now, and, you know, looking for a place to get a little bit more revenue, I thought that the season passes was the place to go. We've really held the prices of the season passes pretty much in line for almost since the start. So, you know, a little uptick there. Other than that, it's-
So your, your projected revenue is one point two billion, compared to-
Almost one.
Two hundred and eighty-seven, yeah, almost one point three billion.
Right.
Compared to FY seventeen, which was a bad year, it was about one point one. Where do you think you're trending? You won't even go until the spring hits, right? For FY eighteen, finishing this year?
Well, I will say that the drought, it takes a while for the positive word of mouth to get around again, and so I, I think it certainly impacted us a bit, but certainly by the latter part of the season, there was a lot of good word of mouth. I mean, our loyal customers were kind of pleasantly surprised that the course had come back as well as it had, and IGN did a very nice job for us in getting things back in order, and it wasn't, it wasn't an easy task, and I must say, Mother Nature was actually quite good to us too. The spring, we had a nice, fairly wet spring, and it helped with the germination. We actually, we actually had our biggest difficulty in the fall, we had our drought last year. It didn't come until like September, October, where, but I mean, by that time, the grass was pretty well established and any damage is going to, is going to, you know, recover fairly quickly. So we, that was one area where, even though it didn't help our revenues very much with all the rain in the, in the spring and the cooler temperatures, it did help with the germination, so actually I would take that trade-off. I don't have anything projected in here, certainly the irrigation system is going to require some, some course closure when we, you know, right now, I'm feeling like these projects would basically happen in the fall of nineteen, so that the FY twenty budget. But it would require some course closure.
Maybe tie in some renovations or improvements at that time.
Exactly.
This is, you know, take a lot of planning.
That's why it'd be good to get the ball rolling, to try to, you know, see-
Take the hit.
Yeah, but also, you know, to get some consensus on, you know, what improvements do we want to make, you know, find out what it's going to cost, try to get everything in order so that when we have to close the golf course, certainly then you start doing the renovations for the clubhouse, and then by the spring of twenty twenty, then everything should be in pretty good shape. The only thing that might need to wait till the end would be the parking lot.
And food and beverage, we just want one, one want, and we-
Yes.
With that in mind, that we might change things.
Yes. And this is the last year of IGN's maintenance contract, so that would have to be, that's going to have to be rebid again at the end of the year, so, you know, tomorrow's question about trying to incorporate some of these on-course improvements, that would, you know, be a good opportunity to do that, and-
So the number here for the management fee is, is not the anticipated newly negotiated, that's the last year of the current contract?
The calendar?
Yeah.
So it doesn't expire until December, 2012.
Okay.
They didn't, we'll have to put it out to bid, the same calendar?
Questions for Bob on the budget?
None on the budget.
On the numbers?
Yeah.
Bob, you just want to go through some of the lines that are going up, like seasonal employees, rentals?
Well, the seasonal employees, I mean, that's a minimum wage situation, much as anything.
Right, but it went from ninety-five to one oh nine to one seventeen?
Ninety-five isn't a new judge because of the drought, that summer of sixteen?
One oh nine to one-
So there's the ninety-five, two thousand seventeen, I can start bumping in there, Bob?
Yeah, that's right, because I don't have the, those numbers right in front of-
Because of the drought, you didn't, you didn't have your seasons working.
And-
So one oh nine to one seventeen?
I think we've stayed very consistent with that, there was, there was a little bit of a pay increase, I mean, there were actually, a lot of the people still are, are not paid minimum wage, so.
So there's no additional hours or no additional people?
No, and the rentals, there were a couple of very overdue replacements of mowers, one a fairway mower and the other a rough mower, they're probably five years beyond their useful life, and each of them, and certainly with the budget crunch of, you know, the prior years, you've been putting it off, putting it off, but-
Is that rental, or is that capital?
That's, that's, it's rentals and leases is what you're talking about, so-
Yeah.
Bottom two lines there, the Toro fairway mower and the Kubota rough mower, that's, that's, that's the main change in that line item, as far as that going on.
Okay.
Was that in repairs and rentals, Bob, is that what you just said?
It's in rentals and leases.
All right.
The-
Are we buying them, or are we buying them?
Um, no, it's, well, it's, it's a-
It's a lease program?
Five-year finance that we buy, you know, buy at the end of the five years.
Okay.
Which is what we have been doing right along, I think that, I think our plans are to, to change that, once, you know, with this, with this debt retired, I think that it probably would've happened this year if it hadn't been for the, for the drought and the impact on our revenues leading into this fiscal year.
You did buy a piece of equipment in fiscal seventeen?
We did, yeah.
Or, or links?
Because we had some nice retained earnings that got chewed up with the, with the drought, you know, with a lot of revenue that did.
What's, what's technical?
Technical services?
Yeah, it's up ten, twenty percent?
There's, you know, a lot of that is credit card processing fees, once again-
So revenues are going up twenty percent?
Well, I mean, that's, that's a portion of it, I mean, you can see, do you have the detail on yours?
No.
We've got-
I don't think I have that.
I did add in some additional fees for credit card processing, certainly, our revenues were, yeah, revenues were probably down twenty percent.
What do you charge?
Over this year?
Down or up? Did you just say down?
No, I say, so I, the actuals on our, on our credit card processing fees was low because our revenues were down, so we weren't, you know, we weren't doing as many transactions.
Right. Did you put that out to bid, Bob? You know, or let people come in to talk to you?
Actually, Pam, actually Pam usually handles that, we've had the same person, but we have, we have looked at other vendors from time to time, it's impaired, and we've-
Seems like they're beating each other up a little bit to get people's business, I don't know, and I can imagine they'd roll out the red carpet for this business, you know?
Yeah, we've, um-
She just left.
Yeah, no, we've, um, we've had, on a few occasions, we've had people approach us, and we've looked into it, and we found that we had a pretty good vendor.
It also includes the Chelsea tee time reservation system, the associated fire systems, the fire stricter contract, golf now point of sale, the Orbit Enterprises for the domain name, the credit card processing fees, and then the Toro irrigation control.
Did we have all that last year?
The irrigation control system is new, that's-
So that's the big-
Four hundred?
That four hundred.
It's, the comp, the, the increase is a result of that, which is a new fee, which will go away when we put the new irrigation system in, it's a computer that kind of operates the irrigation system, and-
And what's the emergency reserve? Is that, it's a little slush?
Yeah, so, well, our used reserve is-
It's the emergency reserve, it's not the slush.
Last year, we only had enough money to put a five hundred dollar reserve into Widows Walk, after speaking with our new town administrator, we decided because there were likely to be receipts available, fifteen thousand, because the problem that is cropping up is they have some kind of maintenance issue, and they don't have enough budget to-
Right.
But you don't wanna put an extra fifteen thousand dollars in repair and maintenance when you're trying to put together a capital plan, I mean, that's what's going on right now with the maintenance building on Widows Walk, it's got significant problems to try and to address, but there is not sufficient repair and maintenance money. This type of reserve, which I have had in other enterprise funds in other communities, can't be touched by the department in charge of the budget, it requires, like the reserve fund in the general fund budget, advisory committee vote.
This does?
Yeah.
Interesting.
So they couldn't, they couldn't go and touch it, they can see it, but they can't touch it, and that's why-
Does it, does it have to be that way?
Because that's the whole point of it, is that it's an emergency reserve for, like our reserve fund, general fund, for emergency and unforeseen, you have to testify to that to some extent, to another independent funding thing, and this is why this is emergency and unforeseen, and we should spend these funds.
It's basically, Tony, giving them the same flesh ability that the reserve fund gives the town, if something happens that no one knows about, there is a count you can go to, you have to come and ask for it, justify why you wanna go to it.
Right, and there's none that they can come to you and ask for, they have to go to advisory?
Yeah.
Okay?
Certainly, you know, the building now has aged, and we haven't been able to keep up with, you know, with maintenance issues as we probably should've, so, you know, we've got two twenty-year-old, twenty-plus-year-old buildings, and certainly, we've kicked the can down the road for quite a while, so, it's certainly, last year, you can remember, there was a lot of issues with, from kitchen equipment to, you know, run on through.
I said some of the problem with being between town meetings.
Nope, I get it, I'm good with it.
Sean, is there any?
No more.
Nope.
I've got one question, as far as, as far as this, like, you know, forming a committee and trying to get things going, as far as an article, when would, when would that end up being presented at a town meeting, for example? Based on the timetable we're, we're talking about, would it be?
An article to form the town, to form the committee?
Well, to, yeah, to fund, to, yeah, to-
To fund any of the improvements?
Yes.
Well, it would depend on when you have the improvements in front of us, so.
It's, it's-
It's the early, it's the money in the capital plan for an architect to do some design work, so the earliest would be in the fall, but you'd have to-
Fall meeting.
Yeah.
Fast track it, yeah.
That'd be the earliest.
But you should have all that stuff laid out in your capital plan, because that's where it's gonna get funded through.
He does have items in his capital plan, we just pushed him out a couple of years in order to get-
Yeah, but you're gonna prioritize, I mean, it may be all shuffled around.
Okay, so the timeframe at the very earliest would be the fall?
Yeah, depending upon, we gotta get an idea how much is on the cost, does that tip off, will we need an OPM or not, do we have to, it's just the architect, and that's based upon the total project cost, so, the sooner we get a committee going to sit down and get an idea of what they wanna do, we can then bring someone in to say, okay, I'll give you, you know, some pretty rough numbers, and that tells us whether we need an OPM or not, or whether we can just go right to the architectural side.
Also, is this an opportunity to thank some of the receipts that aren't being paid for debt service?
What's to build up our retention earnings?
To maybe do some of those retained earnings, rather than have to move immediately to a borrowing plan.
And do you have folks already identified working with you, Bob?
Well, Al asked me to, you know, to get some interested peoples, a very small committee, like five, five people.
Yeah, he's small, yeah.
Yeah, and, and then it was a matter, I, I don't know if he approached John Dennehy or not, but I know John has been very interested, so I don't know if he-
We'll circle around with him on that.
Yeah, approached to, about being the lead, you know, part of that community, so, I don't actually, I don't think I've got a designated liaison for Widows Walk as we speak, so.
Yeah, I think you do.
No.
No. Good point. Anything else, guys?
No, I just think, yeah, we should do a time, backwards timetable from, if, if the goal is to hit the ground running in November of nineteen, work backwards from that, to what needs to be accomplished to meet that goal for construction, you know what I'm saying?
You need to have an construction article for spring of nineteen.
Of nineteen, yeah, okay.
So you have to be ready to go with the money.
We can do that.
Spring, spring of nineteen is what you think, yeah?
Yeah.
Right, so it's funded, so you can hit there.
Finish up, get all your work done, get your, go to bid, get your contractors to be ready for a start.
As soon as you can.
Probably October, you wouldn't wanna start before that, because it's-
Do we have something temporarily, in, temporary in though, for the parking lot for this year at all?
It keeps coming back around to what is the plan for the entire building, because if you're going to add a decking or something like that, it could change access points, which would change the paving.
And you don't wanna, you don't wanna pave the-
Heavy equipment.
Yeah, you don't wanna pave the parking lot, you're gonna put in irrigation and put in the, the-
Just see if we can do something to make it a little bit better for the upcoming season, I mean, it's pretty bad. I don't know, I don't know what, I'm just talking.
You're right.
Yeah, I'm not saying do a complete redo, but just to do something in the meantime, if we're not, if we're looking at 2020, right?
It's a long time.
As far as the projects go, it should be the last step, but I think the, I think what you're saying is maybe to have the DPW maybe come in later.
Maybe you level it, whatever, do something just to make it a little bit-
A grader on that.
Thanks for walking in, Kevin.
Yeah, me watching.
I don't wanna grader, I don't wanna grader would cost, we can look into getting a grader on that.
That's all my point is, is just to-
Scrape the parking lot.
Take care of the safety.
For the next two years.
It'll need drainage and everything.
It will eventually, yeah.
Yeah, when you pave, you're gonna put in drainage and-
Okay.
Did you want me to add, run some walk slack when we add on to a future agenda? Heidi?
Sure, why not?
Okay.
Good idea. All right.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's all your work, and on this especially, it's big budget. All right, so we'll just go quickly through advisory, town administrator reserve fund, who wants to run through these? Jim, you and Nancy, or?
Well, we're doing it together, I'm staying here, the advisory, there's no change, just for their, mostly for their secretarial services, part-time and-
Printing the books.
Yep.
Right, so their budget is six thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars, which is no change from last year.
All right.
Okay.
Town administrator selectmen budget is actually down almost fifteen percent, probably the biggest reduction in that is the fund for labor contracts, a lot of that money's been put into the budgets.
You put it into the department line?
Yeah, also, you know, reductions in the personnel services that were part of the interim town administrator, supporting the office when that was going on, that's, those are also down. Big percentage increase to small dollar increases conference and maintenance, and binding, is the binding one?
Annual town-
Yeah, annual town reports, that's up a little bit, because that just keeps getting more and more expensive, but, again, overall, the budget is down almost fifteen percent.
Yep, so it's down almost fifteen percent, it's at seven hundred thirty-eight thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars, compared to two thousand eighteen, nine hundred twenty-two thousand forty-two dollars. Does anybody have any questions for Jim or Nancy on that?
Well, the huge line is the, the contract, is that council, what is the B?
A contract bargaining, it includes labor council.
So includes labor council and anything that we kept for?
Right.
So that's two hundred thousand dollars. And then is there a shift from full-time to part-time, is that what?
The, the special project board has been reduced.
Okay, and that was under part-time?
Yep.
And you think that contracting bargaining is a good enough number?
We did roll in funds into every single budget.
Oh, so that's, I guess, I guess.
So it's gonna show some of those, yep. Sean, any questions?
Nope.
Karen?
Nope.
Tony covered it?
Thank you.
All right, one thirty-two, the reserve fund?
One thirty-two, reserve fund, no change.
Reserve fund's at seventy-five thousand dollars, no change. Any questions on the new reserve?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, one ninety-two, general liability insurance?
General liability insurance, right now, we're projecting it up five percent, we're actually meeting with them tomorrow. Really, the thing I think we need to look at there with our new buildings is to make sure our values are correct.
Okay.
Not so much the individual values, but the total value, because they, they give you a number for each building, and they give you a total, and it's really the total that matters, so I was on a prior community, the total for the town was eighty-four million dollars, which wouldn't bill the high school, so, we had to go back and look at that, so that, we'll spend a lot of time looking at that, but that's projected right now at five percent, meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Now, is, are we up with them, is it, do we sound like a three-year, is there any term with the people that wrote the insurance, or no, it's a year to year?
I am, year to year.
Yeah.
There's no, we could go out and look at that anytime we want, but they're probably the experts in the municipal market.
Great.
All right, so that's six hundred ninety-four thousand, six hundred ninety-four, four hundred forty-one thousand dollars, compared to two thousand eighteen, six hundred sixty-one, three hundred seventy-three.
No uninsured buildings, right, Jim?
Sorry?
No uninsured buildings.
Nothing I'm aware of, I'll find out tomorrow.
Maritime must have flood insurance as well, too.
Jim, not just Maritime, it's not, it's our community building, and also, the Phoenix pump station, and then-
Maritime doesn't, because it's on pier.
Yeah, well, we looked at the class, the flood insurance cost for Astronomical.
Yeah.
Probably cheaper to replace the building.
We only added the two.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, I misspoke, I meant uninsured, un, unoccupied.
Yeah, the question, that'll be the Gates building?
That's-
Whether we're occupying enough of that to meet the occupied, we should be.
Right.
That was the plan, so we should be all set on that.
Good.
And the police station will be gone, so, I'm not even sure we're carrying the police station at this point, are we?
We are for right now.
Okay.
It's insured right now.
So we'll take, we'll drop that off.
Increase it.
Equipment present.
I see, I see the fence around that one is-
Yeah, what's that coming down?
We've given out the demolition contracts, so they're starting to take stuff out, they're doing asbestos abatements and other stuffs in there, and we also, Kevin's taking some equipment out of there that we're gonna save, so they're doing that, too. We've given us the contracts of the contractors in there now. Streetlights, no change.
So the streetlights, two years ago, we spent, we bought them, we said the price is gonna come down to nothing.
Yeah.
We were over two hundred thousand dollars a year for streetlight costs, the price did come down, it took them about, almost nine months to credit us the, the back rent that they had to refund to us, now we've converted them all to LEDs, and Al's been working on them to get that credit back, and I think that conversion on the LED was probably about six months after that, with him taking on the duties of the acting town administrator, that got put on the back burner, so he's pulling that back out of the shelf to contact them again, and fraud them and say, when is this going to be done, so there is definitely, definitely a possibility that we could revisit this budget before the bicycle ends, and reduce it further, I don't know how much further, but-
We budgeted sixty thousand in eighteen.
Which we, we didn't even have enough past town meeting, we had to augment that by another sixty thousand at special town meeting in November.
Put money in in November.
Just to try to get through this fiscal year, and wait for those credits to come in.
That's right.
And we still don't have them, so, I didn't wanna make this statement twice, where we have a couple of months to, to work on this budget.
Okay, so we expect credits, so this is a timing thing?
So we expect credits, and we hope that it's not gonna go down, but also keep in mind that we-
By how much, do you think, Nancy?
Originally, we estimated, we estimated sixty, Al and I, and then we're thinking maybe that wasn't enough, because we brought on some of those other public streets, other streets as public streets that have decorative fixtures, and those are more expensive, so that's been bringing, adding cost to it, I don't say it's driving up the cost, it's just adding costs, so every time we bring on a public street that has those decorative fixtures, that does have a cost.
But this is a one-time credit, right?
Yeah, it'll be a one-time credit back to when the LEDs were done, and then we'll, then we'll know our true costs for operating the streetlights-
The cost is going forward.
As an LED item, and not having to pay rent, which we haven't figured out yet, because we're having adjusted bills.
So, when do you think we'll know that?
I'll put around, say, when he-
When he gets back.
Yeah.
And when he can, he, his contacts at National are far away anything that I have.
Not so much when the credit's coming in, but when, when it's all done, it's not going to be 120 a year, it's going to be, we were told a considerably less number.
Yeah, well, since we're spending over $200,000 a year, I think we'll probably come in somewhere between 80 and 90.
Yeah.
Hello?
Anything else on the streetlights?
Nope.
All right, workers' comp, 912?
Workers' comp is the same, I actually talked to our workers' comp company at the MMA conference, I'll be meeting with them in the next two weeks to go over our workers' comp cases, I think we have a couple longstanding ones and try to get some closure on some of those, but still level funded at this point.
Okay. So it's level funded at $210,000, spend that way since, 2017 was 200, so pretty close.
That includes the fee?
I believe so, yeah.
Is that cooking companies?
Yep.
Any questions for Jim and Nancy on that?
Nope.
No.
Okay. And then lastly is unemployment, 913?
Unemployment is down significantly over fiscal 18, I believe that was increased to account for some reorganization changes at the school when they moved in the middle school, so those will all be realized this year, so we're looking to drop that number back to about what it normally is in the $66,000 range.
So what's about, we're self-insured?
Yeah.
What's the balance, didn't we want to get it to?
That's workers' comp, unemployment.
I'm sorry, what's the number?
Unemployment we direct pay.
Right, what's the workman's comp balance then?
Uh, it was shy of $600,000. So we fell back the last few years due to the planes, so we're in the 500 range or eating towards the top of 500,000.
Okay.
Our goal is 750.
That's your self-insure.
You used to have a chart or something for that?
There, there should be a chart, it's on front of it.
On the very front, oh, that's right, we saw it in the...
Actually, as of today, we're at 599,412, so if you want, swap me a 50, we can pop it over.
Great.
All right, so back to unemployment, budget's $65,000, last year was 130, okay, which everybody did hear, because of carrying less because of the potential folks dropping off at the schools. Any questions on unemployment?
Nope.
Okay, so that's, that's for the initial first 10 budgets or so, thank you. It's a great book, as always.
Yes.
Folks, are we putting the budget up on blind at all, Jim? Yeah, we're letting you get your first track at. Okay. It's all skiing and ready. So folks can go see it, okay, great, and whose page will that be under? Ours and the board's?
Under selectmen usually, yeah.
Okay, okay, great, just so folks know that it's there. So I hate to disappoint all the people that just walked in, we've been here since six, so we're going to take about a 10-minute break, and then we'll reconvene and go to the next agenda item. Sound good? Okay, so, thank you for waiting, we will resume. So next on the agenda is Brad Washburn and John Drew come up and talk about the MBTA parcel and development, wonderful development that you're putting together.
How'd you all tonight?
Hi Brad.
So I'm just going to give a kind of a quick overview of the town, kind of context where they are in the town process to date, and then Drew Company will come up and give you folks an overview of their project and obviously answer any questions. So to date, they've come into the, before the planning board twice formally. Again, this is at the concept level, just to give an overview of the project, and they can go into much more detail than I can, but it's, it's a mixed-use project with approximately 75 residential units and some retail along the new Driftway. So again, and I'd be paraphrasing and can chime in as well, but you know, they've gone before planning board and I think they were well received. The Economic Development Commission is supportive as well, so and I think, just to kind of pin it back to some of our long-range planning, long-range planning plans, it is consistent with what we have, you know, the vision, the town's vision for the area. In 2016, 2017, there was the vision for the Green Bush area, which called for a development, kind of a centerpiece development, which I think closely resembles what they're proposing. So it would be kind of the, it would be the center of this new Green Bush Driftway district with a mixed-use, kind of walkable pedestrian transit oriented. So again, it's certainly in line with what the planning board would like to see for the area, the Economic Development Commission that's sponsored and paid for this division plan, and it's promoting economic development in the town, but particularly in Green Bush, is supportive. So again, it's, kind of just meets a lot of the things that, you know, all of the, checks a lot of boxes for what the town would like to see for this area where it's, you know, kind of a good site for that type of development. And then previously, there's been other, you know, proposed developments for the site that probably weren't a good fit, I think this is probably much more in line with what the town would like to see there.
And what was nice about this, when we were charged, or EDC was charged with what we're supposed to do, to bring in more revenue, this would do that in terms of taxes, this would do it in terms of housing, it's, as Brad said, it's mixed use, and I think it's really what we were charged to think about and go forward with. And they are, they have been so receptive, when they first showed up, they had one plan, they received some feedback from us, and they changed it, and they made it better. So they were more than willing to work with both EDC and with the planning board, and I think that it's really truly, and I cannot emphasize it more, a terrific fit for us.
Just as a quick aside, it was last week or two weeks ago, we had a Green Bush business owner stakeholder workshop, which was really just to get folks familiar with what's happened in the past, both in terms of, you know, planning studies, what's going on now, so development projects in the queue, and what we had in mind for the future, and that would be the updated zoning to allow for the things that were called for in the vision plan. So we had, you know, a decent group of business owners there, and they were very supportive of the development, I think they were, they agreed that it was in line with the vision and kind of, you know, met the kind of requirements that we wanted to see down there for the type of development, the mix of development, and the activation of, you know, kind of the pedestrian and street front and all the various things, so.
Great.
So that's, again, that's just kind of the context of where they are in the process, so nothing formal before the planning board, but again, just those kind of initial meetings. But I just wanted to get them in front of the Board of Selectmen tonight, because they do have some upcoming deadlines with the states, so I wanted to kind of get the dialogue going as it relates to infrastructure discussions with you.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you for that update. Mr. Drew?
Yeah, sure.
And just formalities for the record, you just need to identify your name and...
Sure.
Yeah, for the record, please.
All right, well, thank you for being with us tonight, my name is John Drew, president of the Drew Company. I have with me here tonight John E. Drew, who's our chairman, Deoni Elchondro, who's our COO, Bob Walsh from Proteon Ventures, who's been helping us in the project, Jim Sandell from Carlin, Jim Sandell, who's our architects on the project.
Welcome.
And John Ford from Horstley, who's helping us work through some of the engineering questions that we had with, with the town. We all don't have a speaking role tonight, unless you want us to, I understand, in the interest of time, but yeah, really high-level brief overview of our company, we're based in Boston, real estate development, property management, hospitality, most of our projects have been in Boston proper. John developed the Seaport Hotel World Trade Center complex, and we, three years ago, opened Waterside Place, which is a residential project, 296 units. We just broke ground yesterday on 300-unit projects right next door to that site. So most of the projects, we have offices in DC and other places, most of our projects have been in the city, but we've been following the MBTA and trans-oriented development here and actually in DC as well for many years now. We looked and bid on this project back, before I should back up and say, just, just for the record as well, I'm a Situate resident, I've been here for 11 years, and John's in the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm a little against them, and, you know, our team is, is a lot of local people as well, so even though we're coming from outside, I obviously have a lot of stake in making sure that we have a really successful, good project for the town, because I'll hear about it from you all and my wife. So we've been looking at this project for a while, we think it's a great site for a trans-oriented project, it has a lot of features that you typically look for, being so right on the first stop of the, of the Green Bush line, and we do feel, and our research indicates that there's a, there's a demand for more residential, rental residential in this, in this area. It hasn't been, most of our comparable projects that we look at, when we look at this project, are fully leased, are full, and we think that even with some of the new units that are coming out, that there's plenty of room for those to be absorbed. We also know from the city that there's, that the, the rates there are just getting too high, a lot of people are looking outside the city, it's a lot what you read about, so that's what we've been following. Obviously, rates to build in the city as well are prohibitive at this point, and we think this is a real opportunity to create, in keeping with the town's plan, a vibrant center to kick off kind of development in this area, in following the town's guidelines for what you can do, whatever you want to do. So we've, we've kept that all in mind, again, we looked at this in 2013, it didn't work out, we came back, 2016, I believe, was when we entered into discussions with MBTA. We're here today to just, I'll briefly tell you about the project, but we also are facing a deadline, we've pushed off the closing of the MBTA a few times, once, I guess, we have an extension, we have to kind of meet with them again for additional extension as we work through some of the issues that we have, infrastructure and other things. I, we had sent something around, I can tell you a little bit about the site. The MBTA, it's about four and a half acres, MBTA as part of the sale has requirements to keep 196 parking spaces on the site. They did, this is from their studies in terms of future need for the, for the MBTA there. So on our plan, which hopefully you've received, we've worked with the T to put, to make sure that parking is preserved and to kind of keep it all together in one area, which is there, makes, you know, they, they want that, we want that as well, so the residential feels, you know, a bit kind of on its own, to create that kind of sense of place, community. We have 77 units that we're showing on our scheme, and they're split between, 64, I'd say I have the numbers, but between one and two-bedroom in three buildings, and the three buildings have parking underneath, and they all have the required number of parking spaces to go with the units. Anyone stop me if I say anything in my, my team, but we also are talking about, in this, this has changed slightly, but we have about 9600 square feet of retail in two buildings, and on the plan, we are trying to create a destination for the town, for the commuters, for the residents, so we show two kind of plazas that go with that retail. The retail, again, split into two buildings, right now, one 4900 square feet, second building is 4,000, 4,300 square feet, and there is another building that we show that we anticipate to be a, you know, pickup for coffee shop type thing that's closer to the Driftway for 2,000 square feet.
So are two of the buildings solely commercial?
One solely commercial, one mixed-use, and that's part of the requirement for the town as well. So that's the large unit is standalone, solely commercial.
Okay.
So we've had a good deal of interest from retail folks and restaurant and other, other people, so we're really pretty positive about what we can put there. You know, I will say that those numbers might change, we're talking, for example, to one potential tenant who is looking for some additional space in that first building, we have the capacity for that, so that, that could be, you know, something that we look at. So I wouldn't say that we're set in stone on those numbers just yet. Again, we want to put some retail in there that doesn't compete with what's existing already in the town, we want it to complement the project. I, I have ideas and things that we don't have in the town that I'd like to see, I think a lot of people probably have room to, but...
Have a little breadth, you know, a little width there.
So, yeah, exactly, but, you know, I, we did have that meeting with the Green Bush business owners, and we are conscious of not, you know, not interfering with other businesses here in the town that have been here for a long time. So, again, our goal is to link into the biking, to everything else that's going on, to the boating, to downtown, and make this really a vibrant spot. So we have a lot of work to do, I know, still ahead, and you want to answer anything?
I can get everything.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, sure.
I just want to note that this is compliant with the town's zoning for the area, and as such, we have an affordability requirement of 15%, so they have, you know, over, around a dozen or so affordable units.
That's right.
Sorry to mention that.
What is it, 15% there?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So talk to us a little bit about your, I mean, it's a, it's a fabulous project, and I personally was really pleased when MBTA awarded it to you specifically for the original plans that you had submitted, and then secondly, obviously because you're local, which just makes it all that much nicer. So really happy for you. So talk to us a little bit about the deadline that's looming in front of you and some of the questions that we can answer for you.
Sure, so we have a purchase and sale agreement.
Yeah.
Sorry, can we move the microphone in front of you?
Absolutely, sorry.
Thank you. It's okay.
So we have a purchase and sale agreement with the MBTA, right now with the closing of January 29th. We met with the T a couple weeks ago to give them an update based on the, the planning board meetings that we had had, and expressed the fact that we have some infrastructure issues that we need to work through before we can formally submit an application to the planning board. And so we said we, we're going to need an extension beyond January 29th, we're not prepared yet to, to purchase the land until we sort of have green lights on everything. So from their perspective, there were still some unanswered questions from, you know, how long do you need, what's reasonable, we don't, they don't want to give us just, you know, a, a time period that's longer than what we really need, so we told them we've got the 23rd of January, we were going to be meeting with the Board of Selectmen, we'd give them an update after that, hopefully we'd have a better idea of what the timeline might be. And I, I think, you know, they're supportive of this project, I think they're just a little bit gun-shy of, of giving us, you know, too much, you know, of a, of a broad spectrum on, on a time period. So I think, you know, we're going to have a call tomorrow with them to, to discuss what happens tonight and just give them an update. I understand there's been some, I think, positive progress on potential strategy for the town moving forward on, on addressing some of the sewer issues, so I think that's going to be something that will be well received from them. So I think, you know, if we have a good sense of it, how long we might need in order to sort of work through this, obviously we're just here tonight just to get the dialogue going, but we expect, you know, it sounds like, you know, everybody seems to really like the project, and, and we're all, you know, willing to work collaboratively to figure out, you know, how can we make this a reality.
Sure, okay. So I think, you know, obviously the biggest concern is sewer, right? And I assume the plan entails connecting to sewer and no, and no other options?
We, we did take a look at, at Septic just to see if it was a feasible option, and from an economic standpoint, it really doesn't work for us.
Okay. So as you know, and been informed, I can tell, you know, we've got some sewer capacity issues, we do have a feasibility report that we were just, we just received funding from, for, from the compact community granting program from the state, which is great news. We're looking at a regionalization project for our sewer system to offset some of the capacity issues that we're dealing with now. And, you know, I'll defer to Jimmy and Kevin a little bit to give you a little bit more detail, but as far as, you know, we've been briefed, that's in the works now, we look to hopefully getting some feedback from that study in February?
Yes.
Okay, in February, the timeline? So until we take a look at that and really get the scope of that project, and I think Kevin and Jim have said it, it's almost, well, it's a three-year project, right?
Minimum.
Right.
At least. But, you know, we need to see what that looks like and see how we can make that work to offset some of the capacity to, you know, potentially allow this project to tap in. Anything?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's two, and I won't speak for Kevin because I made him come tonight, and he's probably mad at me because he's been here the whole time. You know, the first one is the regional sewer project, and we have several areas in the town that do not have sewerage. If we believe that this is a feasible project and it's going to go forward, then we would have a discussion with the board to say, areas A, B, C that are currently slated to go to our plant, we're going to slate those now, now to go to Cohasset and Hull, which frees up capacity that we're saving in our plant that we can do other things with. The other thing we could talk about, and then need to talk to Kevin about this, is whether we can free up the capacity by doing some I and I work, and having, partnering with you to do some I and I work, whether that would be economically feasible for them. They really need to sit down and talk to Kevin about what their projected flows are and what we need to do. Those are the, are some, you know, some combination of those two to try to free up capacity in the plant to do the project. Again, I think the board likes it, it checks all our boxes that we're looking for, so I'd say we need probably a couple of months anyways. Probably into, you know, we're not going to get the report back, our meeting is the 27th of February, so we're probably talking into April, Kevin, before we'd really digest that and have a couple of meetings, and then we'd be able to say, okay, this is how we think we can...
Reconfigure things.
We can do things and get them, you know, with the goal of trying to get them into the sewer system somehow.
Okay. Sean, did you have a question?
Well, you know, Kevin and I, before Jim came on board, we had met with Hull and Cohasset a few times, and I was always under the impression that this regional sewer project would probably, you know, most likely involve North Situate, you know, that whole section, and probably not extend much beyond that, depending upon the capacity, how much Cohasset wants to send to Hull and what they'll have. I almost look at it like it's independent. When Karen and I had met with John and Fiona, I was just looking at the idea of, okay, how do we go around town facing the folks that have been in town for 50 years that, I met one last week, they put their house on the market, did a Title V, failed, they're not going to sell their house, now what do they do? So, you know, so those people that have been waiting for town sewer. So John educated me a little bit at that, at that meeting that, you know, possibly there are ways that, you know, the state could assist them and help us beyond what we're capable of doing to fix our I and I problem, or not, you know, help correct the, you know, the areas that need it the worst. And, you know, Kevin and I spoke afterwards, and, you know, we talked about Lighthouse Point. So if they can, you know, correct 40,000 gallons per day, for example, and they're only going to need 20, well, then we can all go down Front Street and talk to people and say, we let those folks tie in, you know, obvious, for obvious reasons. You know, that's what I see, and I talk to local developers that want to even partner, you know, I've said this to you guys before, and we're kind of waiting to see what, what happens here. But this could be a win-win situation, and, you know, this isn't, you know, what we see here is really not our department, but it looks great, and I'm one of those people in Greenbush that, you know, that, you know, benefit, and it's great for the town. It's, you know, one of the three main entrances into the town, you know, Greenbush here and North Situate. So, you know, I think it's great.
Did you have something?
Yeah.
I love the, love the plan, think it'd be great for that area. You know, like Sean just said, I don't put as much weight in the I and I stuff because everyone's been coming to us for the last 10 years saying...
10?
Yeah, well, me anyways, saying, oh, you know, we'll plug this hole and you'll give us what it does. You know, we really need to see the results of that. And I'm really optimistic about us redoing the water lines down on Lighthouse Point, and, you know, that could be a huge win if it, if it reaps what, what Kevin thinks it will. Huge. So I think to understand what your flow needs are is a real important part of it. There's 77 units, a lot of them are one bedrooms, so it's not like Toll Brothers or whatever, that's a huge, huge project. So that would be something that we really need to understand. And I think that the, I hadn't thought of it as much, as Jim mentioned earlier today, that the whole project, you know, we could really potentially increase our capacity tremendously by sending a lot of areas out, out in that direction if, you know, if it's kind of a much higher ceiling of what we can do.
Yeah.
But the time, the time constraints are that. But if we knew it was going to happen, I don't know how quickly something like this builds, it may coincide better than, than we think. If it takes you five years to get this built and five years where, where, you know, have 30% of our capacity going off to Hull, then that could be a W as well, but... So I like it, I don't, I don't think there's a magic pill to make it work, but I think we'd be optimistic to try and move in that direction. I do have one question for you, though. Outside of this, there was a sliver of land that we talked about on the backside of this property that the town meeting missed the ball on a couple of years ago, and I didn't know if you were still interested in that piece of property. Don't need an answer tonight, but think about it, because we may, it may be an opportunity to put it before town again and see if they were thinking more clearly.
Can we?
I'll get them another shot at it.
Can we sell it to them?
No, 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 we can't, it takes a town meeting, can we go back, has it been one year, do we have to wait one year, that's all?
Yeah, I mean, you have to make it available to anybody. We can't just sell it to them, but they'd be the only ones interested. Yeah, you can go back and ask town meeting.
Many other people are interested, but it is a piece of land that abuts it that is going to be, could be usable in projects.
We'd have to get an appraisal on it to determine the value.
Well, we were offered $225,000 from the MBTA, that three quarters of an acre.
We were offered $390,000.
Well...
Anywho.
And it just was a mess.
So anyways, I support the project, and I think we'd all be interested in hearing any creative ways to get it.
Karen?
What kind of timeframe, to Tony's point, would you look out for build out and, you know, from beginning of construction to end, just whenever? Do you have projections on that yet, or?
We have, we have projec...
Yeah.
We have projections on it, but they're, but they're adjustable. I think the, I think the answer would be if we had some comfort, sort of, that this is going to work for the, for the town and therefore work for us, then I think we'd go ahead and purchase the property. Then I think what we would do is, in line with that, is we'd work on our schedule to coincide. Now, five years is a long time, and we can probably do this project, we think, in two years.
Two or three.
So, I mean, the two would be sort of straight out and finish it. So you could, you could, you could start a little bit later and take it a little bit longer, but there may be a way of, of working again with engineering and others so that that's not a problem. But what we would honestly do is just make sure that we try to tie it to your time, obviously to your timelines and our timelines, and see, I think we could, we could find someplace, I think, to meet the middle on something like this.
Yeah, and I just said five years because that was the outside, I mean, these guys were saying a whole thing could be three to five years out, which is kind of up in the air.
But we still have to engineer, design, moving all that flow anyway, so it'd just be a mathematical switch that this flow, this amount of flow, is going to go in this direction as opposed to going in this direction. And that frees up capacity in our plant, because we're reserving the capacity for those areas without sewer. And just jump in anytime I'm on, Kevin.
Correct, yeah. That would take out of our, our reserve if that was going to...
No, I know, but right now, the stuff that we have going to Hull doesn't exist. So right now, our thoughts for Hull is North Situate, as I think Ann may have mentioned. You know, we don't have, we didn't think that we were going to send the tree streets over there, too.
Right. In, in the value, I think where you guys were talking to their engineers earlier, they've already reached out to us, and that, John, I spoke to John this morning, today, earlier, and then Joe Lago also called me up earlier from their office. I think their flows of 15,000 gallons per day that they're estimating, which is .01 on the scale of things, .015, we're like North Situate, .17. You know, it's, it's a lot greater flow, so even if they were able to find something in I and I, they were talking about working on this order. We have to look at the whole infrastructure and everything else, but I can handle it.
Did you have another comment?
Yeah, well, just, I mean, we very, I mean, this checks out all the boxes, as you well know, and it, as far as planning and economic development, housing, too, which we really haven't touched on. And at the state level, it's what the MBTA says they wanted to do, and it meets the housing criteria for the, for the state. So I think there's a, you know, the partnerships are all in line, and that we really need, hopefully, knowing that we are, you know, putting out a study and trying to really quantify things by February will be enough that we'll convince MBTA to extend for you because you've put a lot of work in, as has the town, to, to meet all these criteria. So is there anything else that we can provide, you know, tell you?
I just think in talking with Brad and Jim, what we'd like to be able to do is is speak to the MBTA tomorrow, tell them about the meetings John and Fiona pointed out, and then also ask if they don't believe us, to give them a call, and if we can...
Or a letter of support.
So that we could basically get until April, which I think is probably a reasonable period of time to at least say, we, I think you would know, pretty much know by then sort of where you stand, and if that's the case, we can then wrap up with the MBTA, which we have planned.
I'm available tomorrow for calls, or I can, you know, Lorraine or Michelle can draft up a quick letter, the board allows me to sign it, saying that, you know, we support the project, we're in the process of determining our capacity to accept it under sewer, but, you know, the town thinks it's a good thing to do, and we want to go forward with it. And I'll sign in the morning, send you guys a copy afterwards.
It may not be necessary to do the letter, but I mean, just be available to you, so if, the letter would be very, very helpful, if you're comfortable doing that.
Sure, I'm comfortable with it. Sean, did you have a question?
Just two quick comments. Kevin, was it, who's the engineers at the sewer meetings, the regional sewer meetings?
Woodward and Karen.
Right. Is he from, the gentleman in the back?
Wesley White.
All right, okay, different, all right, okay. And the only other thing that I mentioned when Karen and I had met you guys earlier was just keep your neighbors, next door neighbors, you know, abreast of what's going on, you know, there was, you know, might have surprised them, I think, and I think I passed your cards on to them, and I just wanted to make sure you guys had been talking, they're, you know, probably one of our biggest employees, as you know, John, you live in town, so...
We've met with them in the past, we, even in the meeting we had with the business...
They were there, Craig, Justin?
They were there.
Good, yeah, good.
So, yeah, we'll keep everyone...
Good.
Very supportive of it, the vision, what we're doing. We gave a report, it was short, to the point, we're going to have another workshop in Greenbush in probably April after town meeting, and all of the people that were there want to come back again and discuss further plans for the future.
I think we got everyone's card that night. We've already connected, no, we've already connected, though, with some of the other business owners as well.
Great, thanks.
The only other thing that I, I want to make sure that we do as a town, and this
isn't really directed at you, but I want the public to really understand, is that as we look through this flow and this adjustment, that we map out a plan to bring on private citizens onto the system in accordance with it. You know, whether it's, we make a commitment that it's 20 people, whatever it is, to work through some number where folks feel that we're not jumping them, again, you know, for developer, and no offense, but I think it's really important to do that and have some number out there that we factored in that we can take on on an annual basis as we work through this. But I, I love your project, and really excited to provide you whatever support you need to get that extension that you need for your...
And I just wanted to add, John mentioned, me and Brad mentioned, before we close, but we are also exploring other opportunities with the state for grants or other things that we could be doing ourselves in conjunction with the town to see if we can kind of help, help this process along as well.
Great.
So...
Anything else, anyone?
Thank you for staying so late.
So we'll draft the letter, await to hear from you if you think the letter is necessary. What would you like us?
We'll, we'll draft something in the morning. Lorraine and Michelle can draft something, we'll send it to you to look at, and then it'll be ready to go if we need...
You'll offer it, and then it's...
Perfect, all right, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, and sorry to keep you waiting.
Come on, please.
Thank you.
We had a very interesting time.
That's just why we've been...
Learned a few things.
It's a nice small way to hang out.
Have a great night.
Ann finished her sweater while she was waiting.
She finished the sweater, and is working on a blanket for it.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Next on the agenda is to speak about the marijuana establishment bylaw, the plan to address...
So, you know, based upon my interviews here, my conversations, and the, my work that the town does on substance abuse, substance control, and knowing that the moratoriums are set to expire sometime in the fall, the town needs to address how we want to do marijuana, retail marijuana, whether we want to allow it or whether we want to ban it. So I met with council, I said, you know, the fastest thing to do is draft up for the board a ban of retail marijuana establishments in Situate. What's the process, how do we do it? That's what you have today, I've given it to Brad, he's made the changes to fit it into our bylaw. It's a zoning bylaw, which is a two-thirds vote, and a regular bylaw, which is a majority vote. Because Situate voted against question four, under revisions to the statute, it does not have to go back out to vote, it can be done by a town meeting vote. The reason I put the prohibition on it, if the board wishes or changes its mind, I think at town meeting you can go from a prohibition to zoning for it, but I don't think you can go from zoning for it to prohibit it if you want to go the other way, so... But just based upon my discussions and my interviews, it seemed like the, the thought of the board would be to not allow this, so that's what I put in front of the board to consider.
I mean, I agree, I support doing that. I don't know how we can be a town who is so invested in facts and trying to fight substance abuse and then condone the commercial sale of marijuana. That's how I feel. Certainly welcome other opinions.
Couldn't agree more.
Thank you for doing this work, because it would have been a shame to let it go to expire and then not be in place to...
Yeah, no, we had to, you had to catch it and make a decision, so...
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah, I personally agree, but I, I think there's going to be a lot of, a lot of opposition at the town meeting, I mean, it was a pretty close vote in the town.
Yeah, it was like 54 percent.
Yeah, so, and people have spoken about it on town meeting, last couple of meetings, someone has gotten up and we talked about the moratorium, so...
It's all right.
So, but I, I support.
Yeah, we put it before people and let them make a decision.
Right.
So we're looking at two pronged approach?
It's a zoning and a general bylaw.
Okay, so two, two articles. Okay.
And with the zoning, the zoning one would prohibit it or allocate it somewhere?
Prohibit.
Okay.
They, they both would prohibit, it's kind of, the attorneys call it the belt and suspenders approach, because, just do both.
Okay.
Just do both. So it'll be, it'll be not allowed use in the zoning, and then there'd be a general bylaw that wouldn't allow it.
Did you do this in any other communities, or?
We banned it in Norwood, we banned it in Linfield. Linfield, we did it before the change in the law, so we actually had to go to the voters. And actually, the more, the banning passed by a higher percentage than actual question four, I think 70% of the registered voters in Linfield had voted, voted to ban it.
Right.
Do you need an official vote for us tonight?
I think Lorraine gave you a vote over there.
Oh, we may have a...
We handed it out to you, just basically turning this over.
To submit it to the, submit the zoning article to the planning board.
Would we have to open the warrant to get it on April?
I don't think so. We haven't closed the warrant yet for the board committee.
Well, we closed the warrant, but we had to...
Oh, that's right.
When can we open?
Okay.
Let me see it.
Let me see it.
Find it.
Does anybody have the motion, just going to make sure we do it right? Thanks, Lorraine.
Motion to turn over zoning article on proposed marijuana establishment bylaw to the planning board for review and recommendation in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 40A.
Second.
Me by Ms. Agnani, second by Ms. Canfield.
Any further discussion needed? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We're in there, Lorraine.
Thanks, Jim, for putting that together.
Okay. The next item on the agenda has been postponed, which is a discussion and vote for Fifty Country Way. We received notice from Attorney Steve Gard that they asked for a continuance, so they will not be in this evening. So next would be to review and discuss and vote a continuance of the public hearing for the Hummer Rock seafood liquor license. How are you? So Stephen, I understand you're still waiting for some determination from the planning board?
Yeah, we had traffic safety tonight.
Okay.
They were waiting for some, planning board wanted some comments from the other boards in writing, so it got continued, and we had that tonight, one of them tonight, so we're asking for a continuance.
How'd that go?
Good.
Do they have any issues, or?
I don't know, they're going to, they're going to put something in writing, they were reviewing it, they could come bouncing back a few ideas, so...
Okay.
It seemed like a long one.
And planning board, your next date is, you have one?
March 8, I believe it is.
March 8?
Or March 20...
22nd.
22nd, yeah.
March 22nd.
Yeah, we have to have, they'll have, they have to have everything to meet by March 8, so, yeah.
Okay.
So our meeting would be the 27th.
Excuse me?
Our meeting would be March 27th, if you wanted to continue it through the meeting after that.
Our meeting's on March 27th and your meeting went in planning board?
22nd.
Before.
Okay.
Planning board's the 22nd, we're the 27th.
Okay.
Yeah, the planning board's supposed to have a list for me of everything that they're looking for, so we can finally, hopefully, put this to rest.
All right. Is board open to continuing this?
Well, that's, as we thought, do we have, is this the only license we have, or it's confirmed that we have another license?
We have free available restaurant alcohol.
Like he's looking for, so we, all right.
So we have, we're not holding anything up.
Okay.
And we have no pending requests for those.
Right, okay.
When was the initial application, the date during?
It was in August.
August.
Of 2017, yes.
Yeah, I don't have a problem letting them hold the license, there's no, no one's looking for it and there's others there for people, so no sense in making you go through the paperwork again and.
Does it make sense to do it two weeks after planning board in case something comes up? I mean, because you said planning board's the 22nd, we're the 27th, right?
If they're gonna give you a list of items.
Karen's supposed to put something together for me.
Put it up till April.
Well, then you, the next would be town meeting right after that, right, Lorraine? March 27th will be town meeting after that?
I'd have to look at the schedule. I can take a look.
I think you're gonna need time to get answers to whatever the planning board list is for you, right?
Yeah, we should have those soon, so.
So probably not five days after, though?
Right.
So how about the, the next meeting that's not town meeting after that date?
So he's asking you, Steve, when, after your planning board meeting, when do you wanna come back to the selection? So March 27th, April 3rd, April 23rd?
April 3rd's fine.
What's April 3rd? Is that just a regular meeting?
Yeah, that's a select. Maybe a town meeting. Town meeting's on the 9th.
I think the 3rd should be fine.
All right, so do I have a motion to continue the hearing to April 3rd?
So moved?
Moved by Ms. Vignani.
Second for discussion, Steve, just, and it's really, it's not up to, it's you, you know, and it's, the building's to sale, what if someone comes along and wants to do something totally different?
They can buy me out. They can buy me out of my lease, so. There, there was a PNS, but that fell through. Okay. But yeah, no, I have a, I have a lease of record, so.
All right, and that, and that, let's go down that road, and if that happens, then is it a big deal for us? He's not really holding the licenses, he doesn't have the license. I'm asking Lorraine, he doesn't.
John, we haven't issued any liquor.
Right, right.
We need to approve it, so.
So if, just just go down the path, if, if it sells and they wanna build condos there or something like that, then he doesn't have to come in and give it up or anything like that, right?
Not at this point because you haven't issued anything.
That's right, okay, all right. He really doesn't hold a license then, you know? All right, that was all, second, I guess.
Is your plan, the same plan, the small restaurant?
Yeah, 28 seats, yeah, nothing's.
I did receive one revised page from his attorney that I have to take a look at and compare to what was originally. But I've been working with Karen Joseph, we're gonna make sure everything's aligned and, you know, have everything all ready at the appropriate time.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, it was seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor to continue?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're zero.
Thank you very much.
So April 3rd. Have a great night.
You, too.
All right, next on the agenda is discuss and vote for board and committee appointment. Opening on the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee. Mr. Banger just doesn't seem to want to be out of town hall. He has submitted his application to us for a position on the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee. Any questions?
Does he think he's qualified?
Is he out of his mind? Do not put that in. Actually, I would love to, I would love to put something once he gets here at the top of his list, so. Do I have a motion to?
Move to appoint Al Banger to Traffic Rules and Regulations for a term of one year or until his successor is named.
Second. Moved by Mr. Harris, second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Al.
We're lucky to have you around.
Next is to discuss and vote drain layer license approvals.
They're all renewals?
All renewals, yes.
Want some motions there?